Time to get started. Nice to see such a big crowd here this evening. I hope to hear from all of you. I'd like to welcome you to the Durham Town Council meeting of Monday, May 7th, 2018, and we will introduce ourselves, starting with Councilor Cora.
Andrew Cora.
Carden Walsh.
Jim Lawson.
Wayne Burden.
Kenny Rotner.
Kitty Marple.
Todd Sellig.
Al Holland.
Alan Bennett.
Sally Tobias.
I'm going to make a motion that we amend the agenda. We are going to move item 10A to right now, in honor of Linda Hollister, naming her for the swap shop. Okay? All those in favor? Okay. Um, let's see. Oh, there is a public hearing?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, my gosh.
We have something in public right now.
Well, guess what? Linda, I'm gonna have you wait. I forgot that this is a public hearing, and I don't expect we're gonna get a lot of naysayers. But unfortunately, we do have to have people give a chance to speak. If you want to have a seat right behind you, and I just forgot about that, so, Kenny, you want to read the, do the honors?
So, I move that we open the public hearing on Resolution 2018-08, naming the swap shop at the Transfer Station Recycling Center after Linda Hollister.
So moved.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Would anyone like to speak to this, this evening? For or against?
My name is Jessie McConne. I live at 35 Dover Road. There is this award being presented that I would like to give my own congratulations for. Linda Hollister has served as a volunteer at the Durham Swap Shop for 15-plus years. I had established the swap shop in 2002, and Linda was one of the first, and she played a big role in ensuring that the swap shop remains a viable program through her hundreds and hundreds of hours of volunteering. I will personally say thank you, Linda. You're a great example and thoroughly deserving of this award.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak this evening?
Public comments, you mean?
No, no. This is, this is just for Mrs. Hollister.
Public hearing.
Public hearing. Yeah.
I move that we close the public hearing on Resolution 2018-08.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Okay, you want to make a motion?
Sure. I move that the Durham Town Council does hereby adopt Resolution 2018-08 as presented, naming the swap shop at the Transfer Station Recycling Center after Linda Hollister.
Seconded?
We had eight seconds.
I'm just gonna, I'm gonna read quickly something here. I'll read it up here. Just want to read a little information that we had been given. The Durham Swap Shop has come to serve the town in many ways, including saving Durham thousands of dollars every year and offering residents a place to discard their unused possessions conscientiously. The swap shop offers a friendly community space as well. Its success is due primarily to the generous efforts of Linda Hollister, who has spent more than a decade, it sounds like longer than that, creating the swap shop as we knew it today. Linda has organized, constructed, installed, repaired, and stocked the shelves every Tuesday and Saturday for years. Linda has also spent years continuously organizing, cleaning, and repairing items using her own resources and time to make items usable again. In addition to all that fine work, Linda is always cheerful and kind when greeting folks that come into the shop or to drop off their unwanted items. Linda's dedication and continuous effort to improve the swap shop should be applauded and honored. The Department of Public Works is pleased and honored to request that Durham Town Council hold a public hearing, which we have done, which will name the swap shop at Transfer Station Recycling Center in honor of Linda Hollister. This is a resolution for you. It is not signed. It's, it's just a draft at this point. I'll give you a good copy, but this is for you to have, and Todd's gonna thank you, Mr. ...
Let me just come closer.
Listen, I didn't do all this alone. We have wonderful volunteers, and I tell you, the swap shop is a great place. I, I wouldn't go there all these years if it wasn't. And I've enjoyed it, and I love, I have so many friends there. And it's like a second family. And I'm not very good at this, so that's about all I'm gonna say.
Thank you so much. Through the years, we've had several young women, men and women from UNH who come and observe our meetings and participate on occasion, and unfortunately, up until recently, when one of our fine councilors suggested we actually acknowledge these folks, we have not done that. But today, we would like to do that for two young men who have been here most recently. And I think I would like, Sally, would you like to do the honors?
As Chair Marple was saying, we have this, the honor of having members of the university come from the Student Senate, and we always have a, what is?
Microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
You want to do the podium?
Yeah, I'll go to the podium. No one ever remembers. Anyways, I was just saying, we have the honor of having, every year, a representative from the Student Senate to come and be the liaison between the Town Council and the Student Senate of UNH. And this year, we actually had the privilege of having two, because there was a change out in leadership. So if I could have Jose Calvo and Hayden Stisen, is it Stisen or Stis, Stisen, sorry, I always get it wrong, come forward. To start off the beginning of the year, and then Hayden took over, and I will say that these guys have been very helpful and have actually served as a great education to me to learn how, how really awesome some of these young men and women are that are getting their education in our town. They're very helpful, they're very, we email them, and they come to our rescue or answer our questions, and they're great, who we have coming up. We ask our future, I feel very hard that we have wonderful. You first, I think he was right. Jose, have a little letter of appreciation, add it to your resume. And Hayden, we have another little, you know, certificate of appreciation, again, add it to your resume and add it to your thing, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. Okay, unless anybody else has a special announcement, we will move on to public comments. Each person is welcome to come up and speak at the podium or at the table. We do only allow five minutes per person, so that everybody gets a chance to speak if they need to, and please just state your name, and thank you.
William Hall, Durham. Some time ago, when I spoke about the fire department, I was interrupted by Mr. Rotner, and then Todd, at the end of the meet, at his turn, said, "This is just my opinion." Well, I came here with an opinion about the fire department some time ago. I said, "The fire department is not doing or putting the emphasis on pre-plans they need to." So instead of Todd making sure that the pre-plans are done, you have the fire chief come here and tell you that pre-plans aren't important. I think his exact quote was, "You never had the fire you planned for." He's absolutely correct, you don't. A pre-plan, which I don't think anybody, because none of you said anything, so none of you understand pre-plans, and I don't think the chief did. What a pre-plan is, is to identify the resources in a building and the liabilities in a building and how you're gonna deal with them. We send five firefighters to a college dorm at night with 500 kids in it, we better know what we're doing, and we better have a plan. When Todd spoke about the new chief, who, by the way, has two administrative degrees and one engineering degree, what Todd told you, the first thing he told you is that he's gonna be working on pre-plans and coordinating with the other towns, which is part of pre-planning. Every single person in that department knows how important pre-plans are, because they went to fire school. I have no idea where the chief was coming from or where Todd was coming from. I'm so glad that we have a chief that understands pre-plans and is gonna put some time in on them. Because what went on here, led by Todd bringing the chief up to contradict me, was pretty poor business. This is my water bill. I think Mr. Walsh will understand where I'm coming on this. My water bill's up 30% in two years. Water and sewer, excuse me. You didn't settle a case for the Beach Hill Tower. Instead, you took the money for the water line on Madbury Road, so now, we're gonna have to bond for that water line. Essentially, what we're doing is bonding for the lawsuit when we should have settled instead of telling the people they had to take us to court. When the Holiday Inn was proposed and went to, and went to conditional use, the last thing that was said before the vote said, "We don't have enough water for Holiday." We put four, four beds in this house, Holiday. But we aren't running out of water yet. I cannot possibly emphasize that the, that we have some pretty poor decision-making in this town. The, I'm hoping that you'll rethink the Baghdad Road work, which is, I understand, is gonna be close to $400,000 on that culvert, because when the people came here to take out the stop logs at 108 here, they said that if you take out the stop logs, it's no longer a dam. That's exactly the opposite of what the people said when they were here about taking out the stop logs at Little Hale Pond. Taking out the stop logs gives you a direct shot at that pipe, it'll pass two or three times as much as it would if it has to go up, go down, and go out, make sure the pipe's open. I don't think we should be spending a dime on that project, and I'm sincerely hoping that you will bring up Bennett Road, because for less money that it was gonna cost us to do Long March, we can do Bennett Road and achieve the same results.
Back to the mic here. Jessie McConne. Two stop logs were removed from the Route 108 dam around 1:30 this afternoon. It was a little like pulling the plug on a very large bathtub. To be fair, the pond will not completely drain, but there is a plan to, by New Hampshire DOT, to eventually remove the dam. I was there to witness the act of removing the stop log that I have tried to defend against. I feel quite shocked at the moment. For you to imagine how I feel right now, think about coming home from work one day to find that someone had chopped down all the trees within 1,000 feet of your home. Not only is habitat for many creatures destroyed, but the appearance and comfort you derive from your natural surroundings is gone. Many of you know that my house overlooks Beards Creek, and the, the change is going to be rather dramatic. The area did used to be tidal, and it was ti, it was not tidal when I bought my home 39 years ago. It was a beautiful pond, and it has been a beautiful pond all these years. Maybe I should have realized that the DOT would one day need to repair the dam and might say, "No, I do not wish to repair it, I wish to remove it so that I never have to maintain it again." I am adjusting to this reality, but I believe there could be actions that would help me and my neighbors to keep the pond and the freshwater ecosystem there. But the DOT Director of Operations refused to budge in his decision to conduct a drawdown today, May 7th. At the DOT informational meeting on April 17th, the Director of Operations, David Rodriguez, went so far as to say that if the town asked for a delay, that would carry more weight than if we, the nearly 40 abutters and concerned citizens, asked for a delay. We abutters tried to persuade the Town Council to hold an emergency meeting. We apparently did not express the urgency of the situation well enough. I, I recognize that several councilors were on vacation and out of state, but there was enough time this past week if you had been willing to speak face-to-face with so many of us who were and who still are concerned. I do know that some of you were willing to accommodate our request for an emergency And it appears I've printed two of page one and none of page two. Anyway, I, I will say that I believe that there are many things that we can talk about as a community, regardless of the fact that the water is draining out of Beards Creek at the moment. I would like to suggest that since there are no other council meetings in May, I, I'm hoping that maybe there's some time for us to plan, to sit down, us meaning many of the abutters who have attempted to communicate with you already about various issues. It is a complicated situation. I did hear one town employee say, and I'm not naming names, but the quote was something to the effect of, "We don't want another dam." And I sort of took that to mean, "Work hard enough already, don't add more to my workload." Well, I, somewhat disheartened by that, I will say that the, I'm aware of the damage that's gone on, and it's a beautiful gateway element coming from Newmarket, just as Beards Creek has been a beautiful gateway element coming from the direction of Dover. And I would really love to consider possible options. Some, we can't get into it tonight, I realize this is public comments time, but we're looking forward to an opportunity to do some problem-solving, recognizing the fact that there are a lot of very smart people in this community who are very capable of problem-solving, and I'm hoping for some future, near-future attempts at, at putting our heads together. And I guess that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McConne.
Good evening, Chairperson Marple, Marple, and rest of the council, and to Mr. Sellig, thanks for the opportunity. My name is Rick Salagi. I've been a proud resident of Durham for about 20 years. I live at 40 Sandy Brook Drive. I realize 20 years in New England is nothing, you have to talk about generations, but it's been 20 years. Tonight, there's an agenda item relative to ORYA because of one alleged encounter. The media, both the professional media and social media, has commented on the allegation, and the comments have been largely one-sided. I wanted to speak to you this evening, I feel I have some unique perspective. I served briefly on the ORYA board years ago. If my wife was here, she'd be able to tell me exactly how many years, it could be 15 years or so ago. I then was asked to become Executive Director, and this is back when the little staff worked in that little hut behind what is now Circle K, no running water, no bathroom. So thankfully, facilities are much better now. I've also served as a volunteer coach, and my, my kids have gone through ORYA programs. My daughter played softball for a couple of years, and my son played flag football, basketball, baseball for several years. I'm sure I'm missing a few sports there. It's, it's easy to catch someone doing something wrong. I think it's unconscionable to do it and not also be fair and catch them doing things that are right. Over the years, I've sent some emails to Mr. Sellig. There might have been some negative ones along the way, I really don't remember those. I remember the positive ones. Some have been light recently, a cartoon that has meaning to you and to me. I made a comment about the April Fools edition of the weekly newsletter, and, and some have been more serious, you know, thanking the council for standing up to Eversource when they wanted to do the easy thing, what was most inexpensive for them and potentially harmful to our community. I also made the comment, when this facility was being built, that finally, that there's gonna be a facility worthy of our town administrator, and Todd, as he would, commented back and said, "Worthy of this great town." Sadly, I haven't read much about all of the positive consequences of ORYA programs. As I said, my son went through many, many sports here over several years, and I don't know what the math is, but I'd be interested to find out, and maybe we'll hear that this evening, of how many encounters kids in this town have gone through, thankfully to the programs put on by ORYA. I would imagine, you know, I don't know what the number is, 1,000, tens of thousands? I, I wouldn't be surprised. I'd be hard-pressed to find one parent, and I'm sure you'll agree with me, I, I don't believe I could find one parent in Durham who would say that they'd much rather have their kids come home from school and play Xbox or Playstation instead of engaging in an athletic activity put on by ORYA. Studies have proven that engaging in sports reduces a child's likelihood of engaging in other activities like alcohol and drugs. If we don't take care, there's going to be negative unintended consequences of the recent publications in the professional media and social media. And I have to tell you, I'm a little surprised at some of the comments that I've seen from people that I know have engaged in, in volunteering within ORYA previously. Unintended consequences can take place, you know, with all the hoopla that's been going on, what's gonna happen is parents are gonna be less likely to volunteer to be a coach. Why would they need the potential aggravation? As we have less and less parents volunteering to step up as coaches, there's gonna be less and less programs. They don't run without the volunteer coaches. ORYA is a local success story. For years, they've been doing background checks, they've had a code of ethics policy. The volunteers, they're just like you. You know, they work their paying job all day, they have their personal lives, and somehow, just like you, they step up and make time to serve as volunteers. These people should be thanked. The small staff does a fantastic job, and, you know, I remember during my brief stint as an interim Executive Director before I hired to replace myself, getting a cup of coffee at dawn on a Saturday morning and going out and stepping on the fields to see if it was...
Sorry, that's been five minutes.
Okay. Can I just conclude?
Briefly.
Thank you. One last point, confirmational bias. All humans, including intelligent individuals, are subject to confirmational bias. It was exemplified by then-candidate Trump when he made a statement that he could go out and shoot somebody on Fifth Avenue, and still, his supporters would support him. So if some of you have already made up your minds, please, please, remain open-minded, listen, think about all of the thousands and thousands of positive encounters that have been brought to your children and your grandchildren and your neighbors' children as a result of ORYA's activities.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Micah Warnock. I'm a resident of 45 Woodman Road, abutting the Beards Creek impoundment, as well as a caretaker of the Jesse Ganger property and helping to keep the cemeteries maintained for everybody. I want to start off by basically clarifying some things that are, have been put on different posts through a letter that, from Mr. Sleg. While it's Mr. Sleg's letter, the words are not his, they're from New Hampshire Department Transportation. He is just forwarding them to us. The talk about removal of the dam is false. The culvert itself will always be there, it's removing of the stop logs. That will still maintain a dam, it will never be returned to the estuary title zone that they're trying to tell us it will be. This is a six-to-eight-foot culvert that the, the power of the tide will virtually destroy in some aspects, but basically will not allow the natural filtration necessary that a tidal will do to bring the area back to naturalization. The other, the other issue is that by drawing this down and then basically abandoning it, what they're wanting to do, this brings down an area that will not be largely tidal, it will be stagnant water as well as an open shoreline that is, will become part of a decomposition that will release odors, as well as will allow invasive species to return back to the area and completely overtake any form of natural habitat that could thrive based upon the removal of these stop logs. While selfishly, I would love to see the water stay. It's beautiful, it's a quiet place for people... stay. It's beautiful. It's a quiet place for people to reflect on their loved ones in the cemetery, and just frankly, it's nice for me to look at it out my back window. However, I do side with science on most things, that dam removal is not a bad thing. With that being said, dam removal halfway is not acceptable. If you're going to remove the dam, remove the dam and go to a complete and full restoration. If you can't do a complete and full restoration, come up with a better plan if you're going to remove stoplogs. Simply to remove the stoplogs and abandon what they have already created is going to do nothing but cause underlying issues, overgrowth, smells, and invasive species takeover. It's not a plan. It's basically a cowardice to say, "You know what? A couple of homeowners have pushed us. We don't want to deal with it anymore. Good luck with this." That's not fair to the residents. That's not fair to the town. That's not fair to the land or the storeship of the properties. So we hope that the council, the town, will engage in conversations to do a better practice on how we're going to take care of this if we remove the stoplogs and how we're going to restore the property altogether. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Matt Mayberry. I live in Dover. I'm a former three-term city councillor, Dover School Board member. I'm also chairman of the Human Rights Commission here in the state of New Hampshire, appointed by Governor Sununu. I came to speak to you this evening regarding the ORYA situation you have in front of you. But my purpose here is very narrow in scope because I read some public comments about a gentleman who is a volunteer, like you, like the main coaches who do this every day. The gentleman is an Oyster River taxpayer. He has children in the school system. It's the gentleman wearing the very sedate shirt here in the front row, Kevin Abbott. He was asked by ORYA to perform an inquiry in conjunction with the Durham Police Department investigation. Two very key words, because in my role as chairman of the Human Rights Commission, we conduct investigations. We are an adjudicative body. ORYA asked Mr. Abbott to conduct an inquiry, get some data. We all live on data. Get the facts. He didn't know the coach's investigation. He was a police officer. He was at the New Hampshire Department of Transportation. He was hired by you, ordered his paycheck, and confirmed by you folks as a Durham police officer. You trusted him with your lives. You should be able to trust him to be impartial and fair. The comments I read was that he was unqualified to conduct an inquiry. Those comments were disappointing, is the nicest word I can use. In my opinion, in my 37 years of public life, this board owes Mr. Abbott an apology because did any of you ask him what his qualifications were before passing judgment? Or did you just kind of guess? When you're talking about people's reputations and their professional careers, there is no guesswork. You either know it or you don't. I'm disappointed in this board, and I know you're a volunteer also. But this gentleman did a favor to ORYA, who is trying to get to the bottom of their own mess. From what I understand, the Durham Police Department said there was no criminal act, thus no investigation. ORYA, from what I understand, fired the coach for a stupid comment. Nothing has been filed from the parents. We have not received anything for a discriminatory act because we wouldn't investigate it thoroughly. Nothing's been filed. Nothing's been done. I'm not here for ORYA. I'm here for Deputy Sheriff Kevin Abbott, a taxpayer in your system that you folks disparaged by saying he's unqualified to conduct an inquiry. So ladies and gentlemen, when it gets to your portion and we get to listen, and I appreciate your time, I'm going to be listening to your qualifications for your own inquiry and why you felt you could say to Mr. Abbott he was unqualified. I appreciate your time. It's tough being a volunteer. I've done it for a long time. But if you have any questions, I gave Mr. Selig my card. Happy to talk with any of you at any time. Thank you for your time this evening.
Hi. Bonnie McDermott, 80 Dover Road, Durham. I've read in a few Friday updates that due to the strengthening economy, that this has triggered recommendations to increase the cost, to recoup more of the cost to the town for the disposal of material at the transfer station. The figures in the town report do not substantiate this. In 2012, we had 183 tons destruction demolition. In 2017, there's 213 tons. But there were nine loads of material from the barn tear-down at Wagon Hill that amounted to 50.72 tons. So that would have left 162 tons in 2017 compared to 183 tons in 2012. And they fluctuate as the years go on. Also, there were numerous dump truck loads from the Thompson property and several one-ton loads from the building of the new barn at Wagon Hill. When the library was built, all the old furniture came to the transfer station. The truckloads of material are commingled with the residence materials, so there is no way to get an accurate weight. In 2014, 65 tons of material came from the new town offices. This was listed in the town report for 2014, but has just been added to subsequent town reports. All of this is part of town's business. It seems like money is no object for lawyers and special interests. It would be shocking if councilors said no once in a while. Residents pay high taxes to live in Durham and should not be subjected to additional taxes disguised as fees for services we are already paying for. The money that the transfer station has made by recycling over the years has always gone into the general fund. It would be nice if once in a while it went back to the transfer station's budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Bonnie.
Peter Stanhope, 37 Dover Road, Jesse McComb's next-door neighbor. I wish I could come here tonight with a simple solution to our pond impound and the dam situation. Most of us who live around the pond were represented when we purchased our property by local realtors that there was an agreement that our property could be flooded up to a certain height, and previous owners had entered into a formal written agreement which they signed with the Department of Transportation. It would be a pond created, and they would maintain that dam at a certain level. When I purchased my home, the perimeter of my land was in good repair. My trees were not falling in. That was just before the Department of Transportation rebuilt the dam, beginning in 2000. And in the first 10 years, erosion began to occur in a fairly rapid pace, to the point where a number of my trees no longer have soil under them along the edge of the pond, and a portion of the rear of my lot is gone. Removing the stoplogs isn't going to solve any of the problems. I will tell you this. I would strongly discourage the town taking on the dam, and I will tell you simply why. The dam is defective. When they rebuilt it, and I gave you a handout tonight because I think you'll be thinking about this and talking about it beyond this evening, that letter was written by Mark Hodgson, an attorney, who served in the Attorney General's office his whole career, where he represented the Department of Transportation. He attended the DOT hearing here a couple weeks ago, and he was so frustrated that he wrote that letter at his own expense. He copied me because he had helped me. I spent 10 years researching thousands of pages, and I included what I think are more relevant ones in the handout I've left with you. And what I understand quite simply is that the DOT used 1953 data to redesign the dam culvert. Durham can't solve that problem. That is a multimillion-dollar problem. Taking the stoplogs out isn't going to solve it. At a flood tide, even as it's constructed today, the saltwater flows back over the stoplogs into Beards Creek. With them removed, clearly, we're going to have substantially more. But when we have one of those high-rain, spring runoff periods, we will still have flooding because we had a culvert that was 10 by 11, and the state reduced it to seven and a half and eight and a half. There simply isn't enough room there for the water to go out. They didn't give that data to the dam bureau, who has inspected that dam for 70 years, every four years, and every time they said it was fine. There was no problem at all. None. And then they decided that the stoplogs were the problem, not the culvert. Didn't mention it. Didn't note it. And why? Because the DOT didn't tell them about the data. I would, you know, one of the things that I've come to love about Durham is we pride ourselves in addressing issues in an open, transparent process. Sometimes frustrating if you're an applicant for something, but the fact of the matter is, whether it be here, at the planning board, the ZBA, the historic district, and I'm disappointed that you people didn't do what you could have done. You could have been politically active in saying to the state, "Stand down. Just hold on for a moment. Let's explore this issue in detail and see what are all the solutions." The problem is, there isn't really a solution because we can't fix that culvert. So we're going to have flooding. We're going to have erosion. And if they think that they're not going to maintain it, the same beavers are going to build a beaver dam as they have on the top of the stoplogs at the culvert now. They're pretty good engineers. We all know that. So let me simply close by saying some of the important questions. Couple minutes?
No, not a couple.
One?
Thirty seconds.
Answer these questions. Who's going to pay for the reclamation? Are you aware that you could lose between $25,000 and $50,000 in tax abatement for the loss of property values? I've looked at the assessments. Everybody around the pond is being assessed higher than off-pond lots. And who's going to pay for the easements to move the sewer line? Because you're going to move it in wetlands, so you're going to need wetlands permits, and you're going to have to buy easements for every property you cross. There are going to be a lot of people, some of them behind me tonight, might not be real easy to deal with. So then you'll have to exercise eminent domain. You have a problem on your hands. I think, stand up for the people of Durham, just the way you did when you took on Eversource. You spent a lot of money there. Don't just put your hands down. Todd, I'm disappointed that you became a mouthpiece for the DOT.
Oh, come on. Peter, that's enough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Pete Pekins, 10 Beards Landing. I've been told not to yell at Kitty.
Yell away.
So I've written a quick letter. I'm just going to read this. I'm going to fix this up and send it to the town council. It's entitled, "Those Dam Engineers." The notion that removal of stopboards will, in effect, remove the dam and negate any need for dam maintenance is the most ridiculous inference imaginable. With or without boards, it is still a dam. Let's go down, pull the boards, and pretend the dam isn't there. It's the old saying, "If it looks and acts like a duck, it's a damn duck." With or without boards, high water will carry debris to clog the outlet. This requires maintenance. Maintenance of what exactly? A channel under the road? An outlet of a dam that doesn't really exist? It's semantics, and it's truly disingenuous to discuss this action in such terms. Somebody has to manage, whatever you call it. Maybe a lesson, Peter took my beavers away, but maybe a lesson about the very best dam engineers is required. Anybody heard of beavers? They inhabit Beards Pond in nearly every waterway in Durham, and they know a damn-good dam when they see it. When that dam leaks too much water and threatens their habitat and safety, they will manage that dam. It is very possible that the DOT will create a bigger management nuisance than anyone imagined. Will DOT or Durham pull those beavers? Enjoy that public relations nightmare, as if the current approach isn't enough. This current action has already left an otter den that I documented, multiple mink dens, muskrat houses, and within a day, the beaver lodge high and dry. Oh, I forgot. They are acclimating to change. DOT's notion that wildlife acclimate to habitat removal in 48 hours is simply beyond stupid. They die. That's it. There are no motels or open habitat to move to. It is simply disingenuous to suggest that the repairs called for in the three-year plan submitted by the dam commission represent considerable expense to DOT and/or Durham. Carefully read that document and inspect the dam structure and area described. The three-year plan is basically a three-year maintenance plan, a description of a crumbling structure and unsound dam. It is not. There is no imminent disaster here. Ecological justifications. It is simply disingenuous, I like this word tonight, to suggest that this action is to or will restore a tidal stream wetland. It is also ecologically ridiculous to describe this action as having any measurable impact on such restoration in New Hampshire. We are talking about a few hundred yards without any potential enasymis fish-spawning habitat. Zero. And that is the primary reason for such restorations. A comparison of the relative ecological value of a freshwater pond in Marsh versus a bored-out Estuary Stream is simply no contest. It's not even close. And let's consider the elephant in the room, the sewer pipes. You cannot have an Estuary tidal stream with those pipes in place. I and the few longtime landowners on Beards Pond witnessed this. The letter from Skip Grady does not lie. I hope not, so where does it leave us? I hope not directly relating this arbitrary and capricious decision by DOT with plans sewer maintenance and/or replacement. And lastly, there's also a serious ecological problem created by eliminating Beards Pond after the recent removal of Little Hale Pond. The highly eutrophic nature of Little Hale Pond is evidence of the degraded polluted nature, just a minute there, of that drainage. However, this pond effectively held back this runoff from directly spilling into Beards Pond that is also highly eutrophic. Together, both serve to protect the Oyster River in the Great Bay National Estuary Reserve from unacceptably high sources of nitrogen and phosphorus. Removal of Beards Pond basically means that Durham will contribute this runoff directly into the Oyster River and Great Bay. This is the exact opposite action taken by numerous communities surrounding the Great Bay. Is this what Durham represents? Beards Pond may not be the cleanest or most productive pond, but it certainly serves as a sediment trap and barrier against runoff into the Oyster River. This has measurable ecological value. Every landowner on this pond is against this action. This simply is no justification.
Wrap it up, please.
Ecological, economic, or otherwise. It is simply an arbitrary and capricious decision. It is a state agency strong-arming a community. It's a damn shame if Durham rolls over. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Durham for about ten years, and I've been a volunteer at ORYA for the last eight. I also happen to be one of the people that was accused by Dan Klein's piece of fiction that was sent to the town of Durham, Lee Madbury, the school board. It was picked up by the local, regional, national, international, and social media outlets. How is it possible that this was allowed to be released to the mass media without names being redacted when the accusations were unverified, uncorroborated, and unsubstantiated? You're so caught in your first, you're telling me, you're a legend, when the rest came to me. The defamation to not only my character, but other people's well, Lee John Gill and Pete Venturam. In my opinion, there are only two ways that this letter was irresponsibly released. Either Dan Klein or the town of Durham made it accessible. If in fact it was the town of Durham that negligently and irresponsibly allowed this fabrication to be released to the media without redacting names of those who are not formally accused of anything, including a minor, you should be embarrassed. If I was, if it was not the town, the town's response should have been to the media request that this was an alleged claim made by somebody who was not there. This was not the response that the town gave. The court of public opinion has already cast their decision on this matter. I can tell you that firsthand by the fact that my wife gets dirty looks the other day when she goes food shopping and walks out of the hand of her crying. Luckily, one of my true friends happened to be there at the same time to comfort her. My expectation is that the town of Durham is going to reach out to these same media outlets and admit that they've handled this matter entirely irresponsibly and wrong. It most likely won't get the same clickbait that it got nationally and internationally as the, you know, once again, piece of fiction written by Dan Klein, but at least it would show that the town of Durham can make, admit that they made a mistake, and actually stand up for the taxpayers of this community that did nothing wrong in this matter. Now on to the fact of ORYA. I think for the fact that the town of Durham is considering withholding forty thousand dollars in funding to the ORYA due to unsubstantiated, unverified claims is a travesty. The children of this community and the great people of ORYA continue to do their job, should be able to continue to do their job. The kids of this community deserve the opportunity to play sports and do it at an affordable price. People at ORYA do a great job over there, and they do it well with the kids first and foremost in mind. I don't know if it's an agenda to get ORYA out of this town and get all these programs under the umbrella of Parks and Recreation, but whatever's going on, the town of Durham really needs to make amends for the mistakes on how this entire situation was handled. That's all I got.
Thank you.
Scott Snyder, resident of Durham. Six Beards Landing. Grateful for all the other comments that have been made. Certainly agree with many of them about the matter of Beards Creek and drawdown. Occurs to me that this isn't, this isn't the town's problem, and it's not the DOT's problem. It's not the EPA's problem, and it's not really my problem. It's our problem. And if it was something easy to solve, we probably would have already solved it. What I think we have is an opportunity to look at this problem, and it's complex, and come up with a long-term solution. One that addresses the economic concerns, one that addresses revitalizing the gateway to Durham as you come off the interstate, one that helps protect the animals, the plants, my property value, one that protects the downstream effects that this may have on Oyster River and Great Bay. I've thought about this, and I don't think fixing the dam is going to fix the problem. But I do think that if we can pause on any further damage by drawing down any more water with some collective thought, mine included, be happy to be part of looking into this further, I think we can find an answer. But what you've heard others say, and what I'm asking for, is the town's help to pause on any more actions that might be taken to draw down the water until we have time to really understand what that means and come up with a long-term vision, a long-term strategy, and a plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Looks like people are done.
Madam Chair, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
I want to make sure. Mr. Mayberry, were you speaking as the chairman of the State Human Rights Commission? Is that what you said?
That's part of my qualification, speaking to you.
And so in your, your capacity here tonight, you were speaking as a citizen of Dover?
Who also happens to be chairman of the Human Rights Commission, yes.
Then you're speaking as... Okay. I just, I just wanted to make clear whether you're speaking for the commission or yourself?
I'm, I'm speaking as myself, who happened to be chair of the Human Rights Commission.
So you're not speaking for the Human Rights Commission?
That is correct. No complaint has been filed.
Thank you.
Or registered.
Thank you very much.
My pleasure. But again, I want to talk about, you're talking about his qualifications, I want to clarify mine.
You've answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Moving on. Approval of minutes of February 5th, 2018. Does anybody have any changes or, yes?
Maybe substantive or not, but on item three.
Page three?
First page.
Oh.
Item three, special announcements. It just says, "To determine the order in which they were listed on the ballot." And I don't, I don't know if it does, does it matter or not, but I was last.
Oh, well, that does matter. Thank you.
So it was actually Councilor Lawson, Councilor Rotner, and me.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else have any changes or anything? Okay. Do I have a motion? Seconded. Councilor Holland, all is in favor? Thank you. Next, we have councillor and town administrator roundtable, and we will start with councillor Coro.
Nothing significant to report from the Conservation Commission from my last report. Our next meeting is Thursday at seven o'clock. I will be chairing the meeting.
Yes, we had a planning board meeting, and I think it was the 25th. And there were, I think, two things that were important for the council. One was that there was a proposed zoning ordinance for solar arrays. Have to say, I was really proud to be a citizen of Durham that night because many, many constituents came forward to discuss this. And there were points on side that it was too restrictive, and there were points on the side that it wasn't restrictive enough. But everyone did it in a very calm, civilized, learned manner that is so often not seen in public debate these days. So it was great. If you have a chance to watch it, it was pretty interesting. We took those comments, and we're going to consider parts of the ordinance that we had before and take another look at it. Secondly, for those of you who are excited about ice cream, we, we decided to allow a new ice cream stand in front of Bella's, but sadly, they've determined it's too late to get it built for this summer. So you'll have to go for ice cream to the very good ice cream at the candy bar on Main Street. And that's it.
Thank you. Councillor Lawson?
I have nothing, and the act committee will be meeting next Monday.
Okay. Councillor Burton?
The Energy Committee met. We, we had a discussion of who should be our chair. As you all know, Charlie Forsey had to resign because he's taken a new work assignment. And we, we, Mary Down volunteered to do it till the end of the summer. She's an expert in energy issues. There's no way she can continue after that. She's very active. And we're going to, we're going to see if we can wreck the Tobias marriage by having Harry, Councilor Tobias' husband, will serve as the vice chair of the Energy Committee. Both extremely qualified people and been very helpful. We discussed the, the reaction to the zoning ordinance we had proposed around the solar array, and I think it, we agreed it, it, our idea was to get an idea out there as we were asked to do. We had a discussion of what our role should be ongoing, and I think we, we decided we'd, this is up to the planning board to, to now decide. If you want help from any of us on the committee, of course, we're willing to pitch in, but that's, that's what, as I recall, that's the way it came out. And that's it, unless you, the school system could lose considerable sum of money. I hate to tell my fellow councillors, if the New Hampshire House passes HB 193 Thursday because it will cost three hundred million dollars by estimates when the Senate tacked on to another bill, a bill that had been defeated three times in the House so far. And we will try to make sure that doesn't happen, I hope, because it's, it's, we already are in enough trouble as it is. Thank you.
Councillor Rotner?
The Durham Parks and Rec meant on Thursday, April 19th, and maybe some of the major points to bring forward. We heard an update about the rink and kind of the rink closeout for the season, so the financials are being finalized. And if I don't have the numbers wrong, that this year, we had an operating surplus of thirty-five thousand dollars compared to four thousand of the prior year. There'll be one big capital expenditure. The compressors need to be rebuilt, and that's to the tune of five thousand dollars. But it seemed like the rink had a very healthy season. We discussed ORYA, so I'll kind of defer on that. But one kind of sentiment from the committee was that if it did go forward, that the town of Durham does have an independently appointed representative to ORYA, that the Durham Parks and Rec would like to bring forward a name to the town council of someone who we felt would well represent the town. There's an ongoing project. We're trying to put together a survey to go out to Durham households to kind of look at how Parks and Rec is meeting the community's needs, where we're falling short, how we can improve, suggestions, and whatnot. So we're working on trying to finalize that and make that a good survey. And then there's the ongoing things that occur. School vacation week, there was a great deal of programming, a lot of focus, planning the upcoming Memorial Day parade, lots of summer activity, so that, that wheel just keeps spinning there. So that's it.
Thank you. Councillor Holland?
We had a meeting, and I'm forgetting when we had a meeting. Todd, Sally, and myself met with Dean Kilpatrick and his team. You may remember long ago, the, they've already left, the freshman, UNH Senate asked about us writing a letter. And so we not only wrote the letter, but the letter was actually directing people to a website. And so the website, little do I know how much work this was going to be, we've built out and broken it into sections. And so there's a voting information section, a off-campus housing section, which Cardon commented on. There's a law, state law and town ordinance, and I think that's the only place I've really seen that clarifies with picture and everything what the trash ordinance really is. A volunteer opportunity as well as then a town student guide, which is the business section. And it, it was a lot of work, and I'd like to really thank, actually, the town staff helped me out. Audrey helped me out. The Durham Police Department was phenomenal. When you're writing ordinances or state laws and you have no idea what you're talking about, it was really, really helpful to have them go through it. So we sat down and talked, and they looked at it, and they were, they were open to working with us. The first criticism they had, or critique they had for me was in the state laws section, they were very sensitive about the photos that were in there. And I really didn't pull any punches, I got to be honest. It's really focused towards alcohol consumption. And the first section that had internal possession of alcohol and unlawful possession of alcohol had, didn't show the student's face, but it showed a student being cuffed on Madbury Road. The, the problem we've had with unlawful houses, I had a picture of Cinco de Mayo. And then disorderly conduct, I had a picture of the post-Super Bowl brouhaha downtown, which had, did in fact result in arrests for disorderly conducts. But I pulled the pictures off and asked them, "Give me new pictures. I'm open to anything." The pictures just have to tell the narrative, which is the trickiest part of that. So we're actually going to, they wanted time to get past Unity Day in Cinco de Mayo and graduation and kind of caucus and look at it, and then think about how we can work together. The one issue that really the town has and the university has is we're going to have to come up with an acceptable content policy, which I think Cardon actually talked about long ago. So I, I think it was really productive on that other, while they're working towards the June discussion, Sally and I are still moving ahead. Tomorrow, we have to turn in to Golden Goose, a slip that directs to our website, which is going to go out to eight hundred renters in all of Golden Goose's properties. So it's still useful what we have here, but I'm still going to have to write a blog entry, a move-in summer setup. So that, I think that's a good start. If we have time, we've just been kind of swooped up. We need to reach out to the other landlords as well. In terms of Parks and Rec, I finally got it done. I promised Rachel I would write something up about the REACH program as well as the summer projects, summer events. Registration is due June 1st, so I really tried to push it out. It went up today on our website. Hopefully, we can get it up on Friday updates. I think it gives a really good write-up of explaining how it works. And then the last thing is just kind of a heads up to the Traffic Safety Committee. In my neighborhood, there's a yield sign that goes from Willie to Sunnyside, and people tend to really cruise through that. And from what I hear, there was a near incident, someone almost hitting a school bus the other day. So they are interested in some kind of remedy, I think probably a stop sign. So I'm just giving you a heads up, that's going to come your way. And that's it.
Thank you. Councillor Bennett?
Madam Chair, could I ask a question?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you have any feel for how many people are going to the website or reading it? Is there any way that...
I, I, I don't. It's like, I mean, I have to do the analytics for it, but you have to pay for it, and I'm totally cheap. The only thing that we can tell actually is by the growth really of our Facebook, which is starting to grow out. I think when we started, we were in the low four hundreds, and we're about six hundred and ten now. So it's been kind of a steady increase that we're getting. So, so someday if I, you know, we actually have funding behind us, we'll have more analytics.
Councillor Bennett?
Yes. Thursday last week, we had a meeting of the Historic District Heritage Commission. We welcomed Michael Bradley as the new chair, and we reviewed three applications. One for a deck on 47 New Market Road, which we referred to the planning board, and then driveway, which we've all seen, the tree work being done on 27 Durham Point Road. And we made some recommendations about the interface between the recommended driveway and Durham Point Road, and that was referred on the planning board. Most exciting was our site walk across the street at 15 New Market Road with Applied Geo Solutions with Carrie Salas. They have occupied the building, moving in furniture and offices. It's really quite spectacular inside. Outside, doesn't look so great right now, but it certainly will. We approved several change items and also had some discussions about plantings for the side in front of the building. And that was, that's all I think we have. Thank you.
I'll just add on the, to further answer Cardon's question. I can look at the analytics for the Facebook page and, easily, easily. And we post to the Facebook page every article that we post on. And we post to the Facebook page every article that we post on the, the website. And we get a lot of, we get a lot of response from that.
Get comments.
We get comments, we see a lot of likes, we get a lot of, I can see how many people have actually seen it. So, we, it's growing, you know? It really is. Considering we have a budget of
Nothing.
Zero, point zero, and sweat equity, so to speak. And I do have to give kudos to Counselor, Counselor Howland for, if he does not ever run for reelection, he will have a job designing websites, 'cause he, I think it was self-learned. You didn't even know how to, like, you didn't even know how to find your text, I think, on your phone. I think you started this pretty, pretty bad, so. He's, he's put a tremendous amount of work into this. I could probably help more, but whatever. But on that, with the Celebrate Durham, and it is, for any of you that are interested, it's www.celbratedurhamnh.com. And I would say, I would suggest you go look on it. It is still being built. It's, it's always something more is being added, but it's bright, and we have an entire university section. We have a section for, for the residents of Durham. We have restaurant blogs, we have Parks and Rec blogs, we have our, some of our trails have been put up there, so it's, it's growing. With that said, too, we are coming up on the first anniversary of the Celebrate Durham Business Group and Resident Group that started, well, almost about this time last year, when Maria from Wildcat Pizza came to Mary Ellen Humphries and asked, what more can we do to increase business for the downtown area during the summer when all the students were gone? And businesses started meeting with, you know, us and Mary Ellen, and we have been actively meeting every single Wednesday with a couple of exceptions, and I mean a couple of exceptions, every Wednesday without fail, and there's always people there. I'm always amazed. And I was particularly excited this past Wednesday, 'cause I just got back from vacation on Monday night, completely forgot and wasn't even sure if there was a meeting on Wednesday morning, realized there was, got there 20 minutes late, and realized that they were all there. There must've been about eight business owners from town. They found a place to meet in a conference room, whether they were supposed to be there or not, they were in that conference room. And they were deep and involved in planning things for the, Rachel was there, and [inaudible] party on Pettrow, and now the music on Main Street, and maybe helping out with, if Ag decides to go forward with their potluck after Farm Day to help out with that. So, it was just heartening to see these business owners just doing what they wanna do and being so active and involved with the town, and it's, it's very heartening to see. And one of the other people that was there was Mimi from Golden Goose. She's a property manager at Madbury Commons, and she works for Golden Goose Properties. And I did stop by to see her today, to see how the weekend, and she said the weekend went well. She was very happy with the way the weekend went. She was very happy with the police presence at their property on Madbury Road, the Davis Court area. She was very pleased and felt that the police presence there dur, on Saturday, was, was very important, and that everything went well, and there was no issues. And she was also very excited, she actually got a compliment from a resident in that area, and she was very happy to hear that, 'cause they don't often get that. So, I think it speaks to that more open communication and involvement in the town. So, you know, kudos to everyone that worked so hard on Saturday. Thank you.
So, a few updates. First is that we have received word from the Seco's Growers Association that the Durham Farmers Market will return to Jackson's Landing this year for 2018. So, they're gonna be coming forward to fill out a request for use of town property form, and I anticipate they'll be starting up toward the end of this month. I don't have a firm date yet, but Jackson's Landing will be the site. And thank you for everyone who's been involved in trying to find a site for them, because I know there's been a lot of work involved with that. Second, the new high-definition broadcast equipment has been installed at the Durham Community Access Television headend downstairs in the town hall, and we have new cameras in this room as well. And so, we are now able to film in high definition, and we're able to broadcast in high definition, although Comcast is not yet able to transmit that broadcast in high definition. It's still standard definition. But the picture quality appears to be much improved, as we thought it would be over what we had previously. And Comcast has let us know that their plan is to enable a high-definition broadcast in the foreseeable future, possibly in the next year. Also, as you know, for two years now, we've been working on a Comcast franchise extension with the Comcast Company, and I expect we'll bring you that document in June or July of this year for action. We'll need to have a public hearing on that, but that is slowly moving forward. Comcast, for those in the public, moves very slowly, and so we slowly move things forward with them. Also, the Durham Parks and Recreation Committee and Department are moving forward with the annual Memorial Day Parade celebration, which will take place on Monday, May 8th. The parade will kick off at Mill Pond Road, in front of the Mill Pond at 10:00 AM, and it'll come up Route 108 to Churchill, and it will end in front of the Memorial Park, and so people can look forward to that. It's always a very nice celebration. And then finally, to just piggyback on something Counselor Tobias had mentioned, with regard to the efforts this past Friday and Saturday in particular by our police, fire, code enforcement, and the full efforts of the University of New Hampshire, and the student, student body, we really did have a very successful weekend. There were very few sombreros walking around downtown. People were generally very respectful. Arrests were down from the past, and we have actually received quite a few compliments from residents who felt that things were much better than in the past. In fact, we had one social media post that was forwarded to me from a member of the faculty neighborhood who indicated that some student neighbors had baked them a homemade apple pie after they loaned them some rakes and equipment. So, that was just some very nice feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to unanimous consent. Does anybody have anything they wanna remove or take off of unanimous consent this evening? Okay. Item A, shall the town council finalize and adopt its goals for FY 2018-19 as amended? Item B, shall the town council, upon recommendation of the administrator, approve a road closure request submitted by Durham Parks and Recreation Department Committee to hold the town's annual Memorial Day Parade on Monday, May 28, 2018? Item C, shall the town council, upon recommendation of the administrator, award the bid and authorize the purchase of a 2018 Freightliner cab and chassis with a single compartment, side-load recycling collection vehicle to GSP Marketing of Somerset, Pennsylvania, in the amount of $219,934.40. Item D, shall the town, Durham Town Council authorize the administrator to sign the town of Durham's first half 2018 tax warrant and direct the tax collector to collect partial payment of property taxes assessed on April 1, 2018, in the amount of $15,497,267? Item E, first reading on ordinance 2018-02, a planning board initiated amendment to Chapter 175, zoning of the Durham Town Council, Durham Town Code, to amend Article II definitions, Article IX, non-conformance, Article 13, wetland conservation overlay district, Article 14, shareland protection overlay district, and Article 23, signs and communication devices of the Durham Town Code to effect changes for floor area, piers and docks and sign master plans. I move those items? Do I have a second? All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, we move on to committee appointments. Item A, shall the town council appoint Carolyn Singer, 5 Woodbridge Road, to a three-year regular member term on the Historic District Heritage Commission, with said term to expire on April 30, 2021? Is Ms. Singer here? Carolyn, you wanna come up and say hello?
Good evening.
Oh, please, go for it. It looks like you had some remarks, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanna say that I really love history, and I love historic buildings, and I think there are precious resources in Durham, and they need to be dealt with in a fairly sensitive manner. And I don't think they always have been. And I think multiple perspectives can always benefit a project, so that's why I'm interested in serving on the commission.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for?
Item, Madam Chair, first of all, hi Carolyn.
Hi.
Thank you very much for taking on the university with the noise issue. I really appreciate that. The, I was wondering, you were quite vocal in your comments about Wagon Hill.
Yep.
And so, if you had been on the committee, what would you have done differently?
Oh, I would've had a study done, because once you have a preservation study done of a historic building, any improvements to that building can be paid for through grants. So, the town, in a sense, lost that opportunity to some degree, because it's no longer as in pristine condition as it once was. And again, you know, part of what makes a historic building important is the spatial qualities, the workmanship, the materials, and if you replace them with contemporary materials, you don't have a historic building anymore. And Durham has lost a lot of historic buildings, and it's a shame. And it creates, I mean, look at all the positive benefit to communities that have strong historic preservation commissions.
Do you think the, you know, one thing we always have to consider is the cost of that sort of thing, but you, you're pretty confident that the grants and all would help to offset that?
I was a museum professional for 30 years. I'm a fundraiser now. I still have a handful of clients that have historic properties restored, and I've had no trouble getting them funds. I mean, it's, it's piecemeal, it's putting together a lot of different sources, but if you do it right, the money is there.
Thank you.
That's the key, doing it right.
Does anybody else have any questions? Oh, sorry.
Thanks for coming in tonight. The application for board appointment asks the question, have you met with the chairperson? Your application was edited, and it says I've met with the vice chairperson. Did you meet with Peter Stanhope? And if you didn't, if you didn't meet with him, why didn't you?
Because I have, I've had the opportunity to talk more with Andrea, and I've, I'm familiar what historic commissions do, and I, I felt that she was, as vice chair.
But this was, your application was back in March?
Mm-hmm.
So, did you not feel a need to talk to the chairperson?
I think I know what his attitude toward preservation is and was, yeah.
Which is, or which was?
I attended one meeting where I thought some very disparaging comments were made about people in Durham who support preservation, and I don't think that's
So, what, what happens if you're on the committee and somebody has a different opinion than kind of?
It's about respect. It's about respect for people who have opinions different from yours. And for example, Durham is comprised of individuals who are interested in sustainability, sustainable agriculture, conservation of open space, preservation of forests, and I suspect there are those who want working forests, and preservation of bees. And, you know, the voice of historic preservation is just as valid. And I do not think that the views of people who support historic preservation were always regarded.
So, I mean, I spent time in the HDC, so I guess my question is, is you have strongly held beliefs related to preservation. It sounds as if, from what I'm hearing, Peter didn't have the same view of preservation, and so, as a result, we, we don't have a dialogue and discussion, or?
As I understood it, he was actually going to be stepping down, and I, last I heard, Andrea was interested in being so
Yeah, it was two, two months before he stepped down.
Well, I mean
So, you chose not to speak with him?
I thought my speak, my talking with Andrea was sufficient, yes.
Okay. I wanna talk about 20 Main Street, and I, I listened to that discussion, and I'd like your opinion if, if things are held in the HDC to the standards that were reflected during the 20 Main Street discussion, is there a possibility that nothing will get done, and a district will go into disrepair, as it did for many years downtown?
I don't, I'm not up on the building that was several months ago, and I've done 101 things. I, I'm sorry, but I can't recall the specifics of that, so. I'm, I'm not prepared to discuss a particular site at this time, 'cause I haven't had time to review any documents.
No, I, I think you were at the, the meeting, weren't you?
I probably was, but I, I review documents fairly carefully, and I haven't done it in, in some time.
My last question is, is, two questions is, it says, you said that work needs to be done correctly. Is there only one way to do work?
Sometimes, yes. Again, I was the responsible for the restoration of a barn that was on the National Register, and when I started working for this museum, they had a plan in place where they were going to replace the roof first, and then realign the stone foundation. And that was exactly the wrong way to do the work. You restore the barn, the stone foundation first with a post in Beam Barn, and then the pieces will come together and straighten up, and then you put on the roof. So, yes.
This, the Heritage Commission is advisory. They have no statutory authority.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The Heritage Committee is advisory. It has no statutory authority. Are you comfortable working in that role?
Sure.
And last question is, is what, what takes precedent, zoning or preservation?
I, I'm not gonna, I, I have to get into it more at this point. I wouldn't be able to, I think, I don't know, I'll have to review.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions for Ms. Singer? Okay, then I think we need to, somebody needs to make a motion?
Alan, you're the H, you're the person of the committee.
Okay, shall the town council appoint Carolyn Singer, 5 Wood, Woodbridge Road, to the Historic District Commission?
Okay, I'll second that. Any discussion?
It's just, it's a three-year regular, three-year regular member, with said term to expire on April 30, 2021.
Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, so it's eight, one. Thank you very much for being here. I'm gonna move on to, shall the town council reappoint William McGowan, 135 Packers Falls Road, to a three-year regular member term on the planning board, with said term to expire April 30, 2021? Hey, Bill? How you doing? Does anybody have any questions for Bill this evening?
Yeah, hey, Bill. Bill, I was, you know, I'm new on the committee, so I've been reading this handbook. It's hard to believe I got this far into it, but one of the points that they make is, you should try and attend any meeting. It's unrealistic to think you can make 100%, but if you can't make at least 80 to 85%, you should think about stepping down. And I know your job is extremely important, extremely time-consuming, and it prevents you from coming to most of the site walks and things like that, but anyone who has a full-time job can't come to the site walk. So, we end up with a committee of mainly retired people. But I was just wondering, do you think there's gonna be any change in your ability to come? And I don't know if you saw the, the letter that came in, but the letter had, over a period of time, you had missed quite a few meetings, and I wasn't sure if those meetings were And I wasn't sure if those meetings were meetings where you came late or meetings where you actually missed.
I mean, I haven't seen the letter. I do know that things for me in the future will improve a little bit. This past six months or so, there were several meetings that I told Karen, Ms. Edwards, that I would be there. Got tied up in meetings, never made it. Or by the time I got back home, it was like eight-thirty, nine o'clock was clearly too late. I thought hard before I resubmitted my reappointment information and given where I stand right now, some things are slowing down as far as additional meetings. I mean, I think I can definitely spend more time here at the meetings. All of them was not, clearly because I didn't want to come. Technology does make things a little bit easier that I can, the meetings I do miss, I can watch on TV. Actually, I watched the meeting, the council meeting a few weeks ago to listen to your comments. So it provides that information that if I do miss a meeting, that if something continuing, I can still maintain information about it and have a valid opinion about it.
We do miss your conversation, though, when you're watching on TV. So, I mean, it's good when people can make it because I agree, de-cap makes it a lot easier when you miss.
And again, I'm on other boards. I'm, you know, report to a board at school, so I clearly know what the attendance issue is and how important it is as far as the impact it shows, not only to the people on the board, but also to the community. So I do realize that. But I do know that things will be changing for me a little bit to free up some of the time. It's interesting from my standpoint that two of the meetings that were canceled for the planning board this year, one in February, one in March, I was available all those.
Oh, geez, that's typical.
Of course.
I was going to spend Valentine's Day with the planning board, but they don't want to.
Bill, you were chair of the planning board at one point, right?
Correct. And that was the Irving Station. That can be my tribute to Durham. And actually also was the vice chair when Andrew Caro served.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Any other questions for Mr. McGowan? Okay, do you want to go ahead and read the?
Sure. I move that the town council reappoint William McGowan, one thirty-five Packers Falls Road, Falls Road, to a three-year regular term on the planning board. With said term to expire on April thirty, two thousand twenty-one.
Seconded?
Seconded.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to presentation item A, quarterly finance report through March of this year. Gail Jablonski, business manager. Welcome, Gail.
Hello, thank you, welcome. I really have nothing to report. Our year is going along very smoothly. Actually, with all the snowstorms, we're still looking good in the snow budget. Current expenditures are nineteen point one percent of the total budget. Last year was twenty point three percent. Revenues, we just approved the property tax warrant, so those will be picking up. Water and sewer warrant was passed and we've started making those collections. That's about all I have. Any questions?
Any red flags for anybody?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So what are you most worried about?
At this point, I'm worried about the police department renovation coming in under budget. No, I'm kidding. I am on top of the chief and it will come in on budget. But no, I really, there is no concerns at this point.
I have a couple of things. One, at the top you have the total revenues. It's net of credits.
Yep.
Can we have an item, a line item? I've asked for this before, but I'm not sure on this account, on this report, for credit as a contra revenue item, just so we don't lose track of those.
Yep.
And I saw with the warrant that our valuation dropped about three and a half percent, something like that from last year. Is that better or worse than you thought? Does that give us some cushion in revenue?
Yeah, I think it's a little better. I think we were two, two and a half.
It's better. We were like.
I think it's a little better.
One and a half, yeah.
So that gives us a little bit of upside.
It does, but you can remember with the revaluation, it could be totally different come the fall tax bill.
Okay, and then.
So we had specifically, the sewer fund really has not increased that much. There was, I believe, a small increase due to chemicals, but that was about it.
Well, I'd like to thank everyone for the good work on it. Things look great.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions for Gail?
When do we start the audit process?
We've had the preliminary audit that came in for one day. We have the final audit scheduled for the end of June.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, presentation item B, update on ORYA recent beaning allegation. Ben Jeans is here to provide us with a report on that. And we have received, I think we all received the report from ORYA regarding their investigation. Thank you for being here.
Also, here's Matt Gloat from ORYA.
Gloat, yes, sorry about that.
The executive director.
Would you like to start?
Yeah, my, my name is Ben Jeans. I'm the president of the board of ORYA and Matt Gloat, the directors here. What I thought I'd do is maybe do a little summary of just some information and then we can probably talk about anything else you want to talk about. But I thought I would, I've got a little statement here, but I'll just summarize the bullets. You know, first off, ORYA is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization. We serve the communities of Durham, Lee and Madbury, providing youth sports. We're funded primarily by our program fees, the towns, the three towns, and fundraising. We provide these recreational programs on an equal opportunity basis regardless of ability. We have travel programs and recreational programs. The safety of each participant is the priority of every program. We're board of directors, which has been a point of conversation for a while. So we've got nine board members per our bylaws. And these are from all, they're community members from all three towns and one member, at least one member represents each town. And then we have officers and at-large members, but they can be from any of the three towns. So as of today, in May, two thousand eighteen, we have five board members from Durham, two from Lee and two from Madbury. Our board members are all active community members dedicated to the greater good of Oyster River and passionate about making youth sports experience safe and rewarding. We have three paid staff, director, assistant director and administrative assistant. We run thirteen different co-ed and girl sports programs at both the town rec level as well as travel, all the way up through high school now. This represents approximately two thousand youth participants from the three communities on an annual basis. We rely primarily on volunteers from the three towns to meet our needs. We have over one hundred and fifty parent volunteers coaching, serving on boards, managing our individual sports group, helping fundraise, donating time on fields and specific projects. In addition to the town support that we get, the school district, as well as the University of New Hampshire partner with us on facilities, as well as UNH will supply co-op students for us. So the Oyster River community is ORYA. Expenses. We, we average around six hundred thousand dollars a year in expenses. To meet those expenses, eighty percent are generated from fees to the parents, with remaining twenty percent coming from the three towns, outside fundraising and donations. Our two largest expenses, which constitute fifty percent of the total expense of ORYA, are basically our administrative costs, salaries, payroll tax, insurance, finance, and then fees to the Durham rink, which you guys know is, you know, it costs a lot for ice time. So that's for our youth hockey program and the skating programs. So that's it on the, that's it on the overview, but I did have a statement, just the last statement, related to the incident. And this is, this is a personal statement because I'm the president of the board. Lastly, based on my responsibility to be duty-bound by the bylaws and policies and procedures of our organization, myself and the board conducted the activity surrounding the incident with the utmost care and concern for the youth affected in a manner of protecting the privacy of all involved and with the goal to move forward with a focus on lessons learned and positive improvements in ORYA for the benefit of our community members. Okay?
Thank you.
So, that's that. The other part then we'd like to do is have Matt explain in a little bit of detail what we are planning to do going forward based on the detailed summary that we provided to the community, the Oyster River community, including the town of Durham. And then we can talk about next steps, you know, some things that I've talked with Todd about offline, just whatever, you know, we want to do to keep moving forward with the community. But I think Matt and I felt it was important that we outline the continuous improvement activities associated with what we've drawn from the inquiry we had and, you know, how we want to move forward, if that's okay.
Sure. Absolutely.
So I've been here for about a year and a half now and I think one thing that sports teaches you is you always are trying to improve every time you go out in the field, you go out in the rink, you go out in the court, whatever you're doing. So some of the things that I noticed when I came in that needed improvement was accessibility, website, registration, scheduling, support to coaches from a curriculum perspective and how to help them come up with session plans and things like that, which we've made improvements on. Following the inquiry here, areas of improvement, it kind of changed a little bit in terms of developing a culture that can be as positive as we can make it. So one of the improvements that we've already moved forward with is working with a national organization called Positive Coaching Alliance. They work with many, many professional coaches and members of Olympic committees from all different sports and different levels. They provide, what I, my goal in getting them involved is providing a consistent coaching methodology across all sports. So it doesn't matter if you're a tennis coach, a hockey coach, basketball coach, baseball coach, and it's not sport-specific what they approach and what they try to develop in the, in the coaches and volunteers that they work with. We had our first workshop on Friday night. We had just over fifty of our volunteers participate and we're going to be having two in-person workshops per year, which I think is going to help drive us towards that consistent methodology that our coaches can present to the players. The workshop was what they call a double-goal coach and what they mean by that is being able to develop life lessons and positive communication standards for all coaches when they're trying to coach their players. We also have online resources with them, which we share over the course of each season as well to keep those methodologies in front of our coaches' minds. Second is something I'm excited about. We're going to start to work with the U.S. Center for Safe Sport. This is only recently coming online and available for non-Olympic committee organizations. So one small group of our coaches, our hockey coaches, have already gone through Safe Sport certifications because the hockey leagues that we play in are U.S. hockey governed. So they had to go and do a Safe Sport certification. And Safe Sport certification is an online education tool which will discuss mandatory reporting for any incidents that the coaches see. Next is sexual misconduct education. And the third element is physical and emotional misconduct education. And they kind of approach that in multiple ways. They obviously talk about what is acceptable and isn't acceptable for a coach to do, but they go above and beyond that and they discuss what, ways that they might be able to identify a player, a participant, that might be experiencing these things in other places, in other areas of their lives, at school, with bullies, on the bus, wherever it might be, and then what to do following those signs. So that is coming online May fourteenth and we're going to begin to have all of our coaches required to participate in a Safe Sport certification, just like they are currently with a background check. So those will be the two elements that will get them on the field with ORYA. Next is increased oversight by ORYA staff with selection processes for our teams and groups. Some teams are all-in-house basketball program. You are on an ORYA team and you play against only ORYA teams for the majority of our age groups. With other programs, it are teams where they participate against another town's teams, but it is not selective in nature for the vast majority of our programs. So that will help to ensure.
Can we just let him finish?
So that'll help to ensure that they are being approached in acceptable locations, making sure that the selection processes are followed in terms of our mission statement and that we have the ability to make sure that they're followed by the volunteers that might be involved in those processes. And then we're also developing a new communication pathway for parents to come forward with ORYA and be able to let us know if there are any incidents or concerns that they might have. We've just put it on our website as of today, actually, where we've kind of modeled it after National Association for Youth Sports kind of complaint procedure. There'll still be some tweaking to it, but it is, it's there in live now. So hopefully, parents that might have any issues, incidents, complaints, hopefully will feel a little bit more free coming forward to share those with us.
Thank you. Yes, pardon.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you, Matt, thank you. That all sounds very positive. Did you mention something about, is it a good idea to be having selections in a bar? Something like that? Aren't there better places for that sort of thing?
Yep, there are better places for it and that's the plan moving forward. We'll be able to use, we've been using the rooms of the library quite frequently for advisory group meetings and that seems like a really good place, depending on the time of day. And obviously, we have our, our office space over there, but there are often classes in there, so we find better spots.
Thanks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here. I guess the key question after reading all of this is, are you going to review your placement policy of students? Because what seems at the heart of this is, should, is parental behavior going to be taken into account when you assign students to a particular teams or not?
Do you mind defining that a little bit more, parental?
In your report, in the report, it indicates there were concerns about parental behavior of a, of a student or a kid who wanted to play on a baseball team.
Okay.
And that became a concern and there was apparently discussion about who would take this child because they were concerned about the behavior of the parent. My question to you is, are you going to review your policy or your practice of taking into account parental behavior when you place students on teams or not?
And I think that's where the review process of all of our placements will come in. So as an example, with our basketball program, I run that almost from A to Z. And I think that if we develop a system for all of our sports that not only works for the sport, but also is able to account for those things, it will be a much better process.
The only thing, I did the placements for twelve years. I'm a founding member of ORYA. To my recollection, over twelve years and multiple meetings placing players, it never came into our consideration that we should do something of, place a student or kid at a certain place because of the parent. Is that something you practice?
Not typically. I mean, I think Ben has been involved with ORYA for sixteen years. Have you ever seen anything like that?
But apparently that happened this time because that's in your report. Is that correct? Right, and it was specific to that, that coach. My question is, are you going to do something about that practice? Yeah, we won't have that practice. Were you going to signal that?
I wouldn't necessarily say that it's been a practice either. What I was trying to say by giving it over to Ben is he's been here for sixteen years and I don't believe that this has come up until now. So defining it as a practice, I think, would be appropriate at this point. So.
I mean, having been, you know, you having been around placement of teams, probably the biggest thing and the biggest frustration that all of us had during the placement process was nothing about the parents or.
was nothing about the parents or any, anything there. It was, once the teams were placed, then you would get an email from a parent basically saying, Sally and Judy are best friends. Can they be on the same team because they live next door to each other? So can we do that? And oh, by the way, she has Tuba practice on Tuesdays, so can she do practice on Wednesday? And, you know, your head, your head's exploding at that point. So, that running around and coordinating is mostly what we deal with at ORYA at their, at that level. And I coached soccer for many, many years, and no. So, I think that's why the changes that we're making of the, of the office being materially involved in the placement and the, some of the draftings and things like that are going on will assure that we don't have that happening.
We had a very specific procedure. We did rate students to make sure we had competitive teams.
Right.
But to my knowledge, we never, ever did anything but do what the students needed. And I have to be very careful, when I say parental behavior, alleged parental behavior because you put it in your report. The only, can I ask one more question to follow up on your report? There's some confusion between, a phone call that was made, because in your report, in one place, it says the alleged coach who made the comment called a parent not knowing who had made the allegation. But later in the report, read the email, the text that was sent, and it looks like that wasn't the case, that in fact, the phone call was made by the alleged person who made the comment to someone who did know that that person was the one who made the complaint. Can you, can you clarify the difference between the two statements?
Sure. So, as soon as, that was in the early stage of the inquiry, and I had spoken with the coach who was accused of making inappropriate comment, made sure that he was aware that he was not to, that he's being suspended from coaching until we have a chance to follow through with an inquiry of some inappropriate comments that were made at the majors draft. And I did not communicate to that person that the allegations were against him, and I did not disclose to him that who had given the allegations either. Based on the short conversation that we had, he took it upon himself to text that person, assuming, well, I don't want to make assumptions, but he then texted the person who had done it. But I had not given him an...
Do you recognize there is an inconsistency in the report between those two pieces of the report?
I thought that I had tried to make that clear, that when I had a conversation with him, I did not let him know that the allegations were against him.
In the report itself, there is an inconsistency.
Yeah, I thought I'd made it clear, I apologize if it wasn't as clear as it is.
There is an inconsistency, right? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
I, I still think that I had it relatively clear, that he was not told that the allegations were against him, and he took it upon himself to text the person, and it just wound up being the correct person. That was on him.
By accident.
Yeah.
Counselor Lawson?
So, first, you're doing tonight what I, what I hoped you would do, and that's to be forward-looking in terms of what are the changes we're going to make and look at in that process. And I had no intention tonight of talking about the investigation. What, what's done moving forward is far more important to me. And then Mr. Mayberry spoke, and so I need to address some of the things that, that he So on Thursday, May 3rd, I sent an email to Kenny Rotner, Al Holland, Chair Marple, and Todd Selig. I send an email to these folks because it's within right to know, and they are the ones most likely to give me a kind of counterpoint, saying, no, you're really wrong. And I told them that I read the report, and I was profoundly disappointed. And I should have really said I was profoundly disappointed in the investigative aspect of it. And this didn't go to social media, Mr. Mayberry, but I did say, Mr. Abbott has no experience with this type of inquiry. The Durham Police Department had declined doing any investigation. Mr. Abbott, based on a statement of qualifications, has a law enforcement background. And I said, from my experience, this is not how matters like this are investigated in either a company or a nonprofit. So, Mr. Mayberry wants to know, I think he demanded to know what my qualifications were. So I just want to let Mr. Mayberry know my qualifications, sir. So I was an early member of the fastest-growing company in U.S. history. It surpassed Dell Computer, and in my tenure, I had responsibility for $600 million of revenue and all the employee challenges that come with it. I left and formed my own company and was a CEO when that company was acquired by a public corporation. Mr. Mayberry, I am a board member of a nonprofit with 100 employees, serving 600 children a day, and I serve on their executive committee. I have four years of emergency medical experience here in Durham. I have seven years on this council. I have knowledge about the Durham Police Department, its staffing, and the roles and responsibility of their employees. I also think people would acknowledge that I have, probably of all council members, the most detailed understanding of their budget. I have a working knowledge about the state police, their roles, their structures. I'm probably the only one here who can tell you the difference between major crimes, Troop F and Troop G. And I have a working knowledge of liquor enforcement. So that's my statement of qualifications. Mr. Abbott, you were Durham Police Officer. I think we met once. I have never disparaged any police officer, particularly in Durham. What I wrote was not disparaging, it merely was about what I believe your qualifications were, and really a lost opportunity to look deeper into this so that the forward, the process going forward might be even more robust. If you were offended by that, I sincerely apologize, but I remain what I said at the beginning of that. I was very disappointed in how Oyster River investigated this, but it doesn't matter. We're looking forward. I didn't even want to touch on it this evening, but unfortunately, Mr. Mayberry made it necessary. So, thank you.
So, several things, and maybe I'll start with what I feel is an appropriate ending. There've been discussions between the town Durham and ORYA prior to this episode. We were concerned at Parks and Rec Committee about some of the operations of ORYA. We had representatives from ORYA speak to us in the fall, and I think Ben, you were not able to be here, but frankly, I don't think that meeting went very well. And so, as a way forward, and I concur with Counselor Lawson, the way forward is what's important, is I would propose that we set up a working group with representatives from the town and representatives from your Board of ORYA, and talk through issues and try to develop a plan going forward to improve our relationships, to define our relationship, to work, and I've spoken with Counselor Holland, to kind of nail down agreements and really have an understanding of what's expected of each of us moving forward. So that's kind of where I want to end up, but a few things, my comment. One, with your report, although, and what you presented tonight does talk about a lot of remedial type of activity, a lot of working with your coaching staff, a lot of progress, and I'm very, very happy to see that. In your report, I would have really liked to have seen a focus on, is there something systemic? I find things don't often just pop up. Things happen because of a culture. And instead of looking at incidents as a one-off, and when we do that, we keep making the same mistakes, is you start looking at, what's our system about? Where did maybe we go wrong, as opposed to an individual coach? Another point, I think we heard from one of your coaches tonight, who was speaking and saying that, that a letter that you received with a complaint was all a fabrication. And I'm hoping to hear ORYA state forcefully tonight that, no, that was not a fabrication, that that was reality, because we're left with a public comment that is stating that's a fabrication. And I think unless we could agree that maybe that's not a fabrication, then we have maybe even more work to do. So I would love to hear that as a statement from you all going forward to affirm that. And I guess the last thing, and I'll leave it at that, is an incident occurred. You had two coaches who spoke up, who I commend greatly for showing their, an ethical notion of witnessing something that wasn't right and speaking up. And I'm wondering what you're doing going forward, and really even in the present, to look to see if those two coaches, who to me are model cultures for you because they spoke up for, for people, and now we're here...
That's enough.
And maybe this reflects the culture of your organization.
Yes, it does, absolutely. This is what we're angry about right here.
What, what you're doing and looking, are these coaches suffering the consequences of being, in quote, whistleblowers? I, I would love to see, because an investigation is here and gone, but I think this is an ongoing issue. This, this isn't all over because the woman who, or girl who decided not to play baseball isn't playing baseball, and you suspended or fired a coach. You've got coaches working for you now who did something and spoke out against some of your other coaches. So this introduces another problem for you, and I hope you're paying attention to that going forward. But first, I want to hear you say, this is not fabrication, this happened.
Well, all right. Our report that we distributed to the public stated that there was an incident and we dealt with it, and that we intended, and so that it, so it, something did happen, there was a violation of our, of our code of conduct and our policies, and we dealt with it. At the same time, we are moving forward with corrective action. And what I'm trying, what I would, what I would say, like anyone would say in any company, okay, when you have an incident that occurs and you have to go in and you have to fix it, you don't throw everyone out, but you actually go in and you try to change behavior. So, there is no doubt in my mind that we need to change behavior. We need to change behavior across our organization and across all the, all the stakeholders of the community, okay? So, that's why I agree totally about trying to get a working group together to, to work on these things. We need your help. We come to you every year, we ask for money. Money's fine, but we need help. We need the community, we need UNH, we need the school district, we need the three towns. In a lot of ways, we've sort of felt that you give us some money, go away, we go away, we go do our thing, everybody's happy. That's good. We've, we've, we've tried to make sure that that's what we go do. But as I told you, we are three full-time staff and 150 community volunteers. So, we try to train them as best we can, they have a lot of passion about what they do, their kids are playing or they're still involved, they stay involved either at the board level, you know, you know, you know the story. You guys have all, y'all have been involved in ORYA forever, and you're all volunteers here, so we, we all get that. So, we're all in. I mean, my youngest daughter is a freshman in college, and I'm here. I've been in ORYA since 2002. I believe in the organization, I believe in the community. So, we're here. We're here to take it, fire it at us, we'll, we'll try to work with you. I will state, I mean, I will say, I'm the president of the organization, I have credentials, I was the CEO of a company, I know, when that came in, that night at 10:30 that night, I got the email from Mr. Klein. I got up that morning, I was on the phone with Troy Bressard, making sure that hit, that Dan Klein's daughter was safe. Is she safe? I talked to Troy. Yes, she's on my team, we haven't even started playing games, everything's fine. I called Mr. Klein. After that, then we set up our committee and we got to work. We asked Kevin Abbott if he would assist us and be an outside participant. So, yes, I did the best I could in getting that organized based on what was in our bylaws, and we, with, with all the commitment of our board, we went after this, and we did the best we could, and now we're going to go forward and continue to move forward. So, I, I agree with you, that's what we'll do.
And, and it's very refreshing to hear that, and I look forward to that process. And what you said is something very different than we heard at Town Council chambers in the fall, where one of your representatives was complaining about us asking questions and then said, what are the next hoops you're going to make us jump through? Signifying there was no cooperation, that we were a burden, and I think, as you said, I think you do need our help, and certainly we need your help. It's why the resolution at Town Council pass starts with clause after clause, recognizing the organization for all the good that it does, recognizing the value of all your volunteers and how important that is.
Right.
And I think working together, we can make your organization stronger, better, and serve the community better.
And, and somebody made a comment tonight, this is my, this is why, this is what I, what I walk the floors with at night. And I know you guys are, you know, we're facing it whether it's with church, whether it's with town, whether it's with, it's volunteerism. And the concern we have right now is what's going to happen as far as us not getting volunteers. You guys deal with it too all the time, we, we see it in the church community. It's just the, this changing landscape of volunteerism, I don't know. We're getting, you know, we're getting older here and we're the only ones that are still doing it. So, yeah, we need, we need new people to be coming in. So, we've got to go forward with a positive message coming out of this. If we don't, we won't be here. I mean, ORYA will be gone, and that won't be good. So, it's, we, you know, and I've talked to Todd about this, and so, you know, we, we're in agreement. Let's go forward and try to put a really strong, positive, you know, lessons learned, we're going, we're going to go out and make changes and make improvements. And, you know, you have my commitment, and until they kick me off, you have my commitment.
Thank you.
So, I, you know, first, the town of Durham has been a strong supporter of ORYA. Not only have we given you $40,000, we've given you free office space since 2009, and we've given you rent-free use of our fields. So we, we, besides that, we've actually increased the budget for Parks and Rec, so we have a tremendous, you were, one of the people was saying about after-school, we have a tremendous stake in after-school activities, and we've shown a tremendous commitment to it. That said, this, I keep hearing this is, this, this incident, this is actually the second incident in the last three years that's occurred through the baseball program, I believe. You've had a suspension that occurred of one of your board members over a verbal altercation with a parent that occurred in 2015, and then you've had this second incident that's occurred. So, the reason that we were asking for an independent, and I do not mean any... So the reason that we were asking for an independent, and I do not mean any disparaging thing to Mr. Abbott, I appreciate all of his background, but you're affiliated with ORYA, you're in the hockey program as an advisor. So, and I wish I could say I've never sat on the other side of your table where we've had an incident occur, but I have. And in each case, we brought in somebody from the outside, a true independent observer. Why? Because as Kenny said, we're looking for a, is there a cultural problem? And I think tonight, you've actually provided evidence there is a cultural problem. I mean, it, it's just, I mean, I, I can't believe in a televised meeting, you actually have undermined your own message. It's really disheartening to me. The second thing I was going to say is what you absolutely never do in an investigation is demean the person that is bringing forward the allegation. You never do that. In fact, how can you put in something that's supposed to bring people to have, the incidents come forward when you have somebody come up at public comments and saying that it's like a fabrication? It's a chilling effect. It is the worst possible outcome. And that actually happened right now, under your, your guise. I'm surprised no one actually even said anything, or that you didn't comment on it. It's really, 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 really bad. That is one of the biggest red flags I can think of. The third thing is that, and Kenny alluded to, it's like, I mean, I've worked with a lot of organizations, but I've always found it to be that if you have a true collaboration, that things can really move forward. And this has not felt like a true collaboration over the last year at all. We've given you many, many things, and anytime we've asked for anything, as Kenny alluded to, it's like we're a burden, or we're a problem, or, I mean, if, even trying to protect you, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the town of Durham. When we hand over $40,000 to you, we have a responsibility to make sure that is spent correctly. When we asked any questions, we were met with extreme resistance. When we, that's to protect you, actually. The second thing is we asked to have somebody put on the board, and it was met with extreme resistance. There is a difference between having a community member and a representative from the town sitting on your board. That is meant to protect you. So everything we've tried to do to reach out, to collaborate, to help you, you've spurned us. So it really, as you can tell, I'm really, really, really angry by what I've seen tonight. So going forward, as I say to Kenny, or as Kenny was mentioning, is that I think we need to reexamine completely what our, our, our agreement is. I've asked Todd to look at it, all I could see really is a 2009 agreement with the office building, I don't see anything with fields, I don't see anything with money. Before we move forward and release funds, and I do want to move forward, because I do value ORYA, we need to sit down and clarify the relationship between us. And that's all I have to say.
One, 100% in agreement about protecting everyone. I, I told Todd, we'd be glad, I would be glad to send over the MOU we have for the town of Lee, and what we, the agreement we have with, with Madbury, because we actually built the other half of Tibbetts Field and have an agreement with the town there on what we share, things like that. So we've got, you know, bear in mind that we work with the, each town, each town's a little-
I was saying, protecting though, you can't have your coaches snickering in the background of the meeting, when we're talking about a serious incident. And you can't have a coach coming up here disparaging the victim and tell me how you're going to protect people, because that's not protecting anybody.
People come to these meetings as citizens, they are not-
They're your coaches, they're your coaches that act under you. It shows a cultural problem when your coaches come here and are disparaging the victims. There's, I mean, that's, I mean, it's on television, everyone can see it.
Okay. Well, as, as we talked, as Mr. Rotner and I talked about, we want to move forward, and we will work with you. If you don't, if you don't want to, we won't, but if you want to, we will. You have my guarantee, you have my commitment, it's my personal guarantee. I don't know what else I can say. I'm the president of the board.
I, I don't think we're going to solve these issues tonight. We've had some good discourse, we've had feedback from members of the public as well, and they're certainly entitled to their opinions. I think really the next logical step is, is for Mr. Jeans and for Mr. Glood and myself to sit down and try to think through how we proceed toward the future. And I'd love to get, you know, Councilor Rotner and your feedback on that, and I think we can put a, a process together that can be effective, and that can allow us to, to move to the future. From my view, we are all partners. We share the same fields, they use our building, we provide 40, almost $43,000 in funding. The office space has been used before 2009, they were in a different building, that as Mr. Salagi noted, had no running water, and was horrible, horrible conditions, but we were fortunate to be able to move them into the historic building. And it was intentional moving ORYA there with the Durham Parks and Recreation Department, because we were looking for collaboration. It, it is not cost-effective for the town of Durham to run its own sports program, or for Lee, or for Madbury. And so we worked together through ORYA, through this longstanding relationship, to provide youth programming with a huge amount of volunteer support. And I think it's important that we work hard to nourish that support. I think to a certain extent, we're all a bit like kids sitting out in Wright Field for the season, and we're just sort of hopeful that no one's going to hit the long drive to us. And in this case, you know, a complaint came forward, there was concern about it, ORYA took the time and did the best they could in investigating the issue, came along with some findings, took some concrete action, one coach was terminated. They have instituted a whole host of remedial steps, and I know that the steps they have instituted are challenging. It's hard enough to get volunteers to commit to spending a lot of time working with our youth and working together and doing recruitment and all of that, but in addition to expect those same volunteers to agree to submit to training is a lot. But ORYA has been willing to do that, so I'm appreciative of those efforts. And I think we can find a path forward. So I, I would recommend we not spend too much more time-
I would say we are in violent agreement with you.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Anything else, anybody else have a question or comment?
Yeah, I would just like to say I had four kids who went through Oyster River Youth Association, and they had a great time.
Yep.
So I just hope that, you know, everything Todd said, we can get beyond this, go forward. Sounds like Matt's done a lot of work here to try and help with training and everything else, so I'm very confident.
Yeah, and-
And thank you for all the time you spend on this, it's, you know, particularly for the volunteers, the coaches, everyone else, it's a lot of time, it's a huge commitment. My wife used to be a coach, and it's, it's just, it's a great thing, I think, that we have in town, we just have to make sure that we keep it great.
And I'll just say one thing, and then we'll get out of your hair. And that's about Matt. Matt came to us about a year and a half ago, so he doesn't have a lot of the history that goes back, but I mean that in a good way. He's brought a lot more IDs, he came from the Sea Coast United Organization, which, you know, is a professional organization as far as how they manage kids and how they organize, so he's brought a lot of expertise, and this access to sort of the national coaching, training, and all those sort of different things. So as a board, we are very pleased to have him. It's baptism by fire for sure, coming into the organization, but, so I, I, I just want to let you know that we're very pleased with having him here now, and he's, he's been here a year and a half, he's already made a lot of changes in the organization, so we hope to keep him here and have him work with you guys some more.
Yep, just one more.
Just full disclosure, I have two grandsons participating in ORYA, I truly appreciate as well, but I, I want to make this, this point. Just because you volunteer to coach does not relieve you as adults of the obligation to present a respectable role model for the children in the program. This has not been an exercise in that over the last several weeks. And, and just because you're a volunteer and not paid doesn't mean you don't have that kind of responsibility to, to model the behavior you'd like to see in the, in the children.
I'd obviously agree with you, and I, and I know another council member brought up a situation multiple years ago. We have, just in our baseball program alone, anywhere from 200 to 250 kids per season. So that would have been, just in baseball, 750 odd kids that would have come through a program in that, just that amount of time. And that's just baseball. We have about 750 kids participating right now in the spring. So if you look at the total numbers, and overall participation over the course of any season, any sport, any year, I think the numbers will speak to themselves for the vast amount of positive experiences that there are.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jeans, Mr. Glood, I appreciate it.
Thank you, thanks. Can we take a break?
Yep. Five minutes.
All right. We're on to unfinished business. Item B. Item A was a delightful interlude in this otherwise interesting evening. Public hearing and action on Resolution 2018-09 to accept and expend grant funding from the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services in the amount of $75,000 to be used for the Little Hale Pond Dam and Stream Restoration Project. Kenny, do you want to go ahead and open the public hearing, if you don't mind?
Sure. So I move the Durham Town Council does hereby open the public hearing on Resolution 2018-09 to accept and expend grant funding from the State of New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services in the amount of $75,000 to be used for the Little Hale Pond Dam and Stream Restoration Project and authorize the administrator to sign a grant agreement and associated documents.
Seconded. Okay. All's in favor? I guess we have somebody who's not voting because he's in the restroom or wherever he went. Anyway, Mike, do you want to come on up? I think you've already talked about this ad infinitum, but maybe you have something new to talk about.
I always love to talk.
Okay.
Yes, so this is what we talked about. This was a grant that we applied for months ago. We successfully received it, and you're officially accepting it now. The project is moving along. We've had two meetings with all the stakeholders, Fish and Wildlife, the Wetlands people, these people, the grant people here. This is a watershed grant through the Department of Environmental Services. And so we've come up with a really great design. And so I'll be showing you some pictures of that coming along shortly, so you'll get a chance to see it. So one of the interesting things is that, I was speaking with the town administrator about this today, the culvert in the bottom will actually have a couple of shelves on either side of it, and that will allow turtles and stuff to just kind of hop onto the shelf and kind of mosey up the -- because remember, we've talked about this, it's at a grade. To get into the pond and where the water will be, they got to go uphill. And then on the other side will be the downhill slope, and little signs that we'll say.
Darn. Terrific. Anything for Mike? Does anybody in the public wish to speak about the Little Hale money? Anybody have any questions for Mike? Yes.
So Mike, how much is this 75 net of the -- does this 385 go down because we got this 75?
Yes. That's the plan.
So it goes to 310?
Yeah.
And what about this 45,000 from before? Has that been spent? Has that been spent?
Yeah. So to get to this point, we've had to do several things to get there. Obviously, estimate the entire project, do some corings and borings and soil sampling, and get to a point where you've got to do about a 60% design in order to put a real figure on the construction number.
So the whole thing's going to cost us, because we're netting out this 75,000, 355,000?
Yeah.
Roughly.
That's the plan.
And you feel that's safe?
That's when we cost it out. That's what it comes to, you know? So another discussion we had today was where we're getting later in the year, and the later the year, the higher pricing goes up because people are not as -- they may have five or six jobs on their whiteboard in the office. Good for them, bad for us, because we're no longer, you know, needed to balance that out.
Can we do it next year?
So we can counter that by bidding it this year, but go into construction next year, so keeping 2018 pricing in 2019. And we may run into a scheduling problem. We'd love to do this before school opens in the fall to keep Baghdad Road open, and that's going to be another benchmark that we're going to be banging up against. So we'll have to make some decisions here in the next 30, 45 days.
Wayne? Are you done, Cardon? You said for now?
Yeah. I mean, so basically, if we vote against it, there's no reason to vote against this, because we're already agreed to spend the money.
This brings our costs down.
Yeah. It doesn't do you any good.
Yeah, we've got lots of time into this project.
Mike, the issue of dam removal is not just happening in Durham. It's all over the state.
Yes.
It comes up frequently. There is a growing movement that we should take the dams out and let nature return. And I'm not necessarily advocating that, but is there a way to purposely, purposefully restore what's left behind when a dam is removed to make sure it's an estate that doesn't smell, that is attractive, and so forth? Because, right, is it just, is there now engineers who do that kind of thing?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Environmental engineering is a big component of that. Little Hale is much different than Beards Creek. There is not going to be any saltwater intrusion into Little Hale. Not going to make it. So totally different dynamic.
I've never noticed it smelling.
Since the water's gone.
Yeah.
When the water is there, it smells.
Oh, really?
Also, a clarification, though, on Beards Creek is they're doing a drawdown, but if ultimately the dam, they want to remove the dam, they have to do, and I ask you this as a question, don't they have to do, you know, a dam removal plan that addresses?
Everything?
That will address many of the concerns that we could bring up?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, there will be a plan, no question about it. It would be an interesting discussion, because, you know, it'll be the state government that will be talking back and forth, and the Fish and Wildlife people will be cheering for the removal, and, you know, maybe the historic or archaeological folks will be cheering to keep the dam in place.
But if there's a decision to...
It'll be an interesting conversation.
When we get through all that, and if there's a decision to remove the dam, there still has to be a plan to address how you're going to remove the dam and mitigate some of the impacts of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so at least I have a general understanding of that.
And just to be clear, New Hampshire DOT has acknowledged that.
Wayne, you had a question? Trying to be fair here. Cardon, you want, we'll bounce it back in, because you asked...
Well, my question was, we heard from our constituents tonight that they expected us to weigh in heavier than we did, even though it's a state project, and I was...
This isn't really Jermaine to the Little Hale, though, is it?
Okay. Well, let me frame the question, Jermaine, to Little Hale. What role should the town play officially, or should we push for a greater role in the way the state deals with dam management in our town?
Todd didn't understand what you were saying.
What was the first part of what you said?
What role should or does the town, should we take a position on these projects that the state comes in and says they're going to do, or do we have enough leverage now, do you think?
Well, in terms of Little Hale, that's a town-owned structure, town-maintained, and it's our responsibility to address the deficiencies that the Dam Bureau has pointed out, and we are...
So that worked well, but now we have another -- okay, that's a different...
So we would expect the State Department of Transportation, which is the dam owner, at a different site to do what was needed, to either bring their dam into compliance or to remove the dam and to do it in accordance with the requirements that will be in place. And that would include remediation of some type of that channel. In terms of Beards Creek, it's, I mean, we have not engaged DOT in this conversation, this is a DOT initiative, but if they move forward with a proposal to remove the impediment altogether, it's unclear to us what that means. The residents were saying they're just going to remove the flashboards and walk away. I would be surprised if that will be allowed.
Right. That argument we've had before, it's still a dam. It's the same argument we have with Little Hale.
Right. At Little Hale, we can't just remove the flashboards and say, oh, it's not a dam anymore. It's still a dam. In a heavy flood, it's, we're going to have the same problems. It would undermine the road and cause a release. The same concerns are in place for Beards Pond, which is farther, a little bit downstream of Little Hale. But with Little Hale, we had concerns about significant algae blooms that created a public health concern from the immediate butters. The Dam Bureau identified numerous deficiencies, and we determined the best course of action was to remove that dam. So with regard to Beards Landing, unless the town is prepared to step in and take ownership of that structure, and I agree with Peter Stanhope by Public Works, and I believe that that's very problematic, will be very expensive, and I don't believe the town should take on that responsibility, then we can provide feedback and input. I guess the question is how the council wants to approach it. I defer to you. I looked at our council goals. I looked at what was presented, and I provided feedback to the DOT in regard to Beards Landing. But in terms of Little Hale, I would strongly recommend we close the hearing and approve accepting the $75,000.
I move to close the public hearing.
Seconded. All those in favor? Okay. Any other discussion? You want to accept $75,000 of easy money? Do it!
So Motion 3, the Durham Town Council does hereby adopt Resolution 2018-09, which, as said before, accepts and expends the grant funding of $75,000, which will be used for the Little Hale Pond Dam and Stream Restoration Project.
Thank you. Okay. Seconded. Got to vote on it again. All those in favor?
So I just...
Oh, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm being very persnickety. I'll vote for this because it's $75,000, but I just want to say again, I'm all for taking the dam out. I don't think we need to spend this much money to take the dam out.
Okay, but you still want to vote for this?
But I still want to vote for this because it's $75,000.
Okay, so all's in favor.
You're holding your nose?
So 9-0. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Janelle, you have been exceedingly patient on a long day at work, and you're the last person standing. I am sorry.
Well, he's not the primary or the sole mover of this. He's a partner in these conversations.
Well, I'm going to read a little statement before I go to the item on the agenda. UNH and the Town of Durham have a symbiotic relationship as a necessity. It is important that we work well together to overcome many issues of policing, utilities, maintenance, road repair, and relations. For a year and a half, members of Town staff and council have labored, along with UNH representatives, to formulate a shared services agreement which will define responsibilities for the next 10 years. As Chair of the Town Council, I would like to thank the following individuals for undergoing the long, sometimes painful, process of negotiation to arrive at a meaningful and equitable contract. From UNH, Paul Chamberlain, Bill Janelle. From Durham, Gail Jablonsky, Mike Lynch, David Kurz, Todd Selig, Faro's Cat Truck, Cardon Welsh, Kenny Rotner, Jim Lawson, and Todd, oh, Todd Selig's twice. Boy, you must have really worked hard on that time. Okay, Item C, shall the Town Council, on pond recommendation of the administrator, approve the shared services agreement between the Town of Durham and the University of New Hampshire for a term of 10 years effective January 1, 2019, with respect to policing, roadway, sidewalk, signals, lights, and Main Street rehabilitation, and authorize the administrator to sign said agreement and make any non-substantive changes necessary to effectuate said agreement and bring this matter to closure? You want to come up and say hello? Since you went through all that?
Why don't you sit down?
Well, he's been sitting for the last two hours.
Stand up. Sit down. Stand up.
I guess I just want to thank the Town's negotiating team. This was a long one to get through. Like you say, a year and a half. It wasn't an easy one for us to figure out. We worked hard to quantify what the impacts actually are, number one, and then try to put a value to those as well, which I don't think either side got exactly what they were looking for. But in the end, I think from our point, we understand what we're paying for now, which I think is a large, is a big benefit, and I think it's fair. I think it makes sense.
Great. Would anybody like to ask? Do you want to go ahead?
I think Jim Lawson has some...
Oh, yes, sorry.
You know, we had an email, and there are always questions about, you know, how do you know that this is an equitable agreement? And I thought I should spend a little bit of time and just give some background, and Kenny and Cardon can fill in, you know, the pieces that I might leave out. But I wanted to start with policing, and I think what people may not know is there really was a tremendous amount of work in the background for the Durham team, looking at data, preparing, sharing data between UNH and the town. We, near the latter parts of this, we really decided that that was the most productive way to move this forward, is just, you know, open up the data both ways so we could ask questions and verify it was right. So I wanted to talk a little bit about just some of the data and costing at a high level. But, you know, the first thing we did, which was really time-consuming, was performed kind of analysis of all the arrests in 2017. And that actually took quite a bit of time. We had to go through 52 reports and summarize the information that we needed. And arrests really don't, you know, you can't take the arrests and, you know, come up with some factor and say, oh, UNH, you owe us this amount of money. But it gives you a sense of what our police officers are doing and how our resources are being used. And also, I think for us, there were some surprises in the data, and I don't mind sharing with you as I kind of go through the high level what was a bit of a surprise to me. But when we looked at the data, the first thing we found in 2017 was, in Durham, this is just the Durham arrest, not the arrest by UNH, about half of the arrests are students and half are non-students. The exact figure is 55%. And of the total arrests, about 20% were students that were living on campus. And that was a new data point for us, because it was only in the last year and a half or part of 2016, '17 that we'd been collecting that. So, you know, hypothetically, if you went into the police station and they had 10 people that they just arrested, five of them would not be UNH students, five would be UNH students, and two of those students would be on-campus students living at Randall or Christensen or something like that. That's the 20% number. But we also wanted to take a look at the arrests during the peak periods in the spring and fall, when we pay for an enhanced presence with our police officers. Now, honestly, what I expected is we would see a big spike, more students being arrested, lots of students from on-campus who are coming downtown, but it's not what we found. During the weeks when the police decide that enhanced patrols are necessary, we found that the number went from 55 to 58% of the arrests were students. And the number of arrests that were on-campus students ticked up a little bit to 23.8%. That was eye-opening for me. I really felt we would see a really big, you know, a really big jump in the on-campus students. But it's, you know, there's more arrests, but the proportions, you know, seem very similar. So the agreement reflects a couple of areas of where UNH has recognized some costs. And UNH, I think I'm correct in saying, is really kind of constrained to reimburse for what they can show is the cost of the university on the town, you know? You know, if they really liked us and wanted to give us, you know, $5 million for policing, they couldn't, because it doesn't reflect their costs. So the first area we looked at was the cost of providing that enhanced... So, the first area we looked at was the cost of providing that enhanced police presence during the spring and the fall. And that's to provide four police officers on overtime, administrative assistant, a booking officer, Stratford County deputies for transport. And one of the things that we recognized is not every night do we put the police officers out there in the spring and in the fall. If it rains, our police officers are very immuneable to getting a call saying, "Hey, we, we don't need you for the overtime." So we had to go back and, and look at it historically in terms of how much do we use them, and also kind of get some good guidance from, from the chief. And we, we, we came up with an estimated cost of $110,000 per year. And I feel very confident in the work that was done to come, come up with that figure. Maybe next year it's 108, maybe the year after it's 112, but it's a, it's a, really a, I think, a very, very solid number. The second area is what I call evidence and prosecution. We have to have an evidence technician to process the evidence. We have administrative support for prosecution, and that's basically a full-time position. Deputy Chief Kelly's time is, substantial part of it is focused on prosecution. We estimate about, he and Chief Kurz estimate about 45% of his time. And then we also keep a lawyer on retainer. And we took a close look at those costs, and they total up to be rated about $180,000 per year. So, in this agreement, what UNH is doing is paying for, it's a percentage between 20 and, 20% and 25%, it's like 22-something, of the enhanced policing during the fall and spring, and the same amount for the prosecution. So, I just asked you to reflect back on arrests. We can't use it to calculate an exact number, but yet we have come up with a number that we could all agree to that was based on the fact that when we look at the kids being arrested, about 25, or 20% plus a portion of a kid, comes from, from on-campus. And the, the university has agreed to cover that, that cost. There's more work in this than, than you can imagine, but Paul Chamberlain, I think, was very diligent in going through it with me. We did find some, some errors both ways, and so all it did was increase the confidence in the work on, on both sides. The town now incurs all the costs for a POP officer. For folks that might be listening, a POP officer is a problem-oriented policing where they focus, in our town, in follow-ups in areas where we anticipate problems or we have had problems. And the idea is to engage, educate, and, and do those activities so that you can avoid disturbance and arrest further down the road. And when we initially went into that program, it was through a federal grant. The funding from the federal grant declined over three years. Now we pay all of the POP officer costs, and Chief Kurz has briefed the council about the POP officer and the positive impact, and we've had to weigh that cost against, you know, the benefits that it provides. I guess speaking for UNH, UNH sees the POP officer as very valuable to both the Durham and university communities. The whole idea about proactive problem-solving rather than reaction and, and arrest. And UNH came forward and offered to fund 75% of the POP officer. And the description that we came up with in the contract really parallels exactly how we use and want to use the POP officer today. The POP officer can change, you know, year to year or ever a couple of years. It's actually a good place to put an officer that's had experience. So we don't always know that it will be, you know, Officer Young or so, but, but it generally is an officer with five, six, seven years of experience. We looked at the pay grade, and the cost for the POP officer, fully loaded, you know, with retirement and things like that, is $100,000 a year. So, UNH has agreed to, to pay 70, 75% of that. And, and I think it's good on our side because we've seen the value of it, and UNH wants to make sure that it continues because we always have to kind of weigh the trade-offs. Other things I just, you know, want to point out more for people that may be listening is, UNH maintains a police force comparable to the size of the Durham Police Department. UNH also does their own prosecution and investigative work focused on the campus. The UNH and Durham Police have a good collaborative working relationship, and they're both CIA certified, which is indicative of the, the quality of the, of the both departments. But I'd also say that UNH Police are in the Durham community because UNH surrounds a good part of our downtown. So they do provide value to us. Their presence provides value, their enforcement activities when they're off-campus, you know, if they see somebody violating a law, you know, they, they are going to do something. They're not going to say, "Oh," you know, yeah. You know, "Not a student," you know, or, you know, "I'm on Main Street." They react the same way that a Durham Police Officer would react. They're a resource that can be called upon, and I just want to acknowledge that UNH didn't, you know, suggest that they should receive any offset because of that, that value. And the value goes, goes, goes both ways. So, that's a, a summary of, of the policing, and I'll, I'll just stop there in case you have any questions. Talked long enough with enough figures and-
I mean, a big, a big thing that I think a lot of the townspeople overlook when they complain about what UNH pays is that a lot of those students live in town. They pay taxes, and they're our citizens, so we're really responsible for them. The fact that they're students doesn't mean that UNH has to pay for all their services. We get the revenue.
Just ending up, you know, the other big piece too is the roads and sidewalks and that other infrastructure. And again, we worked with metrics that were dizzy, trying to do studies of cars and during times when UNH was in session, and UNH not in session, when Oyster River was in session or Oyster River not, and, and just kind of do all these studies. And I think, and I think it became clear, we were able to get a sense of what, where, where the answer should lie, and I think we were able to come up with a good metric. But unlike the agreements from a few years ago with water or sewer, where we have a meter and we could measure, and we were able to say, "Yep, that's exactly what it is," these negotiations, we used data and used it extensively, but we also used a spirit, I think, of, of understanding and cooperation. And I think that that's really what led us to come to these agreements. And as Bill said, UNH would have probably, if they were writing the script, would have wanted it different, and certainly Durham, if we were just writing it, we would have wanted it different. But I left, and I think we all left, feeling it was very fair, it was very equitable, and it really represented our interests. And I see it as more than just these agreements. I think it really defines the partnership and how important it is to work together and come to those understandings. And I think it, it really lays a good framework as we go forward, as we talk about West Edge or 66 Main. This concept of being able to, to, to say, you know, "This is really important to our side, this is really important to the other side," come to understanding. And through the dialogue that we had, I think we really came up with something that, that is very, very equitable and very fair. And I thank the UNH partnerships in it and, and my colleagues for the amazing lifting that they did.
Yeah, I, I just want to echo what Kenny is saying. We, well, we had a doctor, a businessman, and a lot of engineers who wanted to like quantify traffic, and I feel that we made a tremendous effort and were somewhat baffled by the results. And it clearly wasn't going to give us some insights like, you know, arrest, arrest data. And then I just want to say one other thing for people to understand is, is one of the things that I've learned is roads don't deteriorate because of car usage. They deteriorate due to truck traffic and age and environmental considerations. So I'm not even sure counting cars would have really helped us, but-
But we tried.
But we tried. But I, I will tell you that from my standpoint, I, I like where we ended up because Main Street is of importance to the town, but also of great importance to the university. And much of the characteristics of Main Street, which have been improved so dramatically in the time that I've lived here, have been the result of UNH grants, and, and we've supported that. And the idea that on Main Street, from Pettibrook all the way out to Mast Road, that UNH is going to pay for the maintenance and the capital improvements, I think, first, it's, it's, it is a, it is a cost. It is for Durham a, a significant cost. But I think it ended up being a very equitable way to have UNH contribute, but in an area that really has an impact on, on, on them. Plus agreeing to continue to pay for the maintenance and expansion of the Amtrak station. And I just want to qualify that Durham is still responsible for the, the winter maintenance. It makes no sense for one of our snowplows to go into that section of Main Street and lift their plow. And we've, you know, carefully memorialized how sidewalks are handled, which has been the way it's been in the past, but it's nice to have it memorialized. And the only other thing is, is just to be aware of, is Durham is responsible for the bridge overpass over the tracks in terms of the structure. On top of it, the paving and maintenance, UNH will be responsible for. And when I say responsible, responsible for reimbursing the town of Durham. But I, I, I think it's both equitable and it, it, it makes sense, and it does allow Main Street to, to change over time in a way that benefits both, both the town and the university.
The town's responsible for the park, the big parking lot behind the train station there?
Oh, yes.
So, the university has the train station and-
Oh, depot lot?
Yeah, we, we, this agreement does not address parking or the, the depot lot, and so we continue to maintain the depot lot, and more importantly, the revenue that it generates every year.
Any questions for Mr. Janelle or statements or comments?
I'm just extraordinarily lucky to have Jim doing this kind of work with the university. I can tell you that these kind of good relationships don't exist in Hanover, Manchester, Keene and Plymouth. I hear about it all the time. There is no requirement for UNH legally to come and cooperate with us, other than their goodwill, and there's some self-interest too, but I, I think I really appreciate it. It's, it's a role model for the other college towns in the state, and I just appreciate all of the great work you've done.
Thank you.
Well, and again, I want to recognize all the negotiating team, and, I mean, we worked hard on this one, and particularly Jim and Paul Chamberlain really dug in deep to the policing piece and the data, and I think that made a big difference at the end to have those facts.
The new president can take this one off his list. He'll have plenty of other ones. That's, that's a gift.
Sure, plenty to do.
It was a gift. Okay, do we have a statement to read at the end here, the motion?
I think you read it.
Oh, okay.
Do you read it? Jim, why don't you second it?
Yeah. I read the-
Morning? Here. Did you motion and second it?
Yeah, so I'm making motion that Durham Town Council does hereby, upon recommendation of the Administrator, approve the shared service agreement between the town of Durham and the University of New Hampshire for a term of 10 years effective January 1, 2019, with respect to policing, roadway, sidewalk, signals, lights, and Main Street rehabilitation, and authorizes the Administrator to sign said agreement and make any non-substantive changes necessary to effectuate said agreement and bring the matter to closure.
Seconded by? All those in favor? Nine zero. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
A lot of good work.
Thank you, Bill.
And now, do I have a motion? And I can't believe we're out of here before 10:30. I was shocked. Oh, no. No, no, God, no! I should have said it earlier! No, go ahead.
I still like we should spend five minutes on Beard Creek.
Okay. Oh, okay. Fair enough.
So, if I may-
Go for it, man.
I would like, yeah, keep Mike here.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, from, my understanding from today and the various gentlemen who were here talking about it, is that the, the current hole, and according to Peter, it's, we, it's about 40% smaller than the one it replaced, but it's too, too small to create a working estuary because if they take out all the stop logs, the bottom of the, of the culvert is still too high. Right?
The bottom, the bottom is too high?
That's what they said, so I'm just, I would like to know exactly.
I think it's just narrower, isn't it?
Well, it's, it's allegedly too narrow and too high so that there will still be water in there even if they take out the stop logs. Yes, Bill?
It's, it's hard to, you can't, and I know some of you have stopped and looked at it, you can't really see what you're looking at from either end. The logs are in, in place in one end, and then the other, it's, it's the change of, if you go down there where the water's too high and you just can't, you can't get a good look. Like, at Little Hale, we, I physically went in the pipe. You know, that's, we can't do that.
Unless you put on your scuba gear.
Okay, so Mike, you, so you don't know, you're not sure if it's low enough, wide enough, high enough?
I, I don't know this for sure, but if this was my project and we were going to take out that dam, we would remove, we'd close the road, we would remove whatever structure is there, we'd take the whole thing out, and we would create with a hydraulic process so that, to gain the maximum amount of saltwater flush into that system as possible. And you'd probably do that with a, a culvert like we're going to do on, on Little Hale, or even better, the, the co-drive culvert. Because a co-drive culvert is more of a bridge than a cove.
Yeah, if you want more of a bridge.
Very high, very wide. And, and so, I can't believe that down the road, New Hampshire DOT is not going to look at that as a, just cut that entire section out of there and rebuild the whole thing, and then they, they take it off their, off their list for 100 years.
Was there like requirements though for it not to be a dam? Doesn't it have to be wide enough? I mean-
Yeah, I mean, so, so the question, the question is, and I haven't heard or figured out the answer is, is if you remove all the stop logs, is the structure still considered a dam?
Yeah.
And I, I think that it is still considered- And I think that it is still considered a dam. And if it's still considered a dam, you have the same problem, which means you would have to redesign the culvert so that it's no longer a dam.
But we don't own it, it's their issue, so how do you, how do we move forward? Do we?
Well, I'm just, I'm wondering if Todd and Mike can talk with DOT and ask these questions. I mean, is there sense that that culvert is too small and that we won't have a working estuary if they remove all of the stoplogs? And if they say it is, and reasonable people disagree, then maybe we should hire an engineer or something like that to take a look and see if it's going to be wide enough. Because we don't want what some people suggesting might happen. There'll just be sort of sludgy, still fresh water always in there, because there is still a dam even if you take that out. And the tide doesn't really go in and out, it sort of goes sloppily over sometimes and other times not. So you just get a mixture of morass. If you look on, you know, Route 4 coming into town, there's two nice estuaries there that actually are pretty interesting to look at, I think. And that seem to be working well. And I would think if they are going to go through with this, that would be what we would want as the town of Durham. We'd want another working estuary there.
I hate to say like one government agency and another government agency, but it's almost like I'd love to ask the dam bureau to go look at that and answer Jim's exact question. It's like, is it still considered a dam? Because if it's still considered a dam, then they're under the jurisdiction of the dam bureau, right?
It's no different than Little Hill, it's still considered a dam.
So then they're still going to have to be...
And as long as it's there and in part of the roadway, the roadway is part of the dam process along with the box. It's all one intricate piece. That's why I'm saying, down the road, they're going to need to take that entire section out.
Right.
And then put in, you know, 24-foot wide culvert. It'll become now a basically a mini-bridge. Great, at the same grade.
Go ahead.
For those of you that were at the public session, I know Carden was there, I was there. Kitty was there. Correct me if I'm wrong. There was a representative from the dam bureau there, and of course, a DOT representative. But my understanding was they're taking the stoplogs out. They never talked about taking the culvert out.
No.
But to your point, yeah, they need to widen that, but they're not going to do that. They said in eight, well, around or about 18 months, that's their intent, is to take the dam out, but they're not going to do anything but take the stoplogs out. So is it a dam? Or is it just a culvert with stoplogs? I don't know.
We need to see...
We can ask that question directly.
Yeah, we need to see the data on the 100-year and 25-year rain event.
Right.
And...
Well, and there's also the sewer pipes is another question.
Okay, so let's do this though first, before we get to the sewer pipes, because that is. But, so can you two, I guess, take on the question of, you know, is this still a dam? Are they just going to take out, because that is, you're correct. That is what they were saying, they're just going to take out the logs and call it a day. So if they do that, is it really a working estuary or not? Because some gentlemen here seemed, who live by it, seem to think it's not. So we have to find that out first, because we may need, yeah, our own experts to check it and prove otherwise.
Kitty?
Yes, sorry.
The, yeah, I was at that meeting, and the reason they, at least I heard, the reason they took the stoplogs out is because of the projection of what the 100-year flood would do. Because the culvert has been narrowed so much. And that's why they took, essentially took the stoplogs out. And that's not going to solve the problem, because depending upon how much of a flood that is, even with the stoplogs out, it can still flood.
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. It's, what it did, what it will do with, for the DOT is give them capacity, flood capacity, up to a point.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
And then all bets are off.
Yeah, they're just kicking the ball down the road is what they're doing at this point in time. Is what's going to happen to the former pond at Little Hill, the same thing is going to happen to the pond at, is it two different situations? Because that's not going to be a saltwater estuary up there, it's going to be freshwater. When you say the two areas you like, Carden, you're talking about the other two areas you can go by and there's seabirds out there?
Yeah.
And there's mudflats?
Bunker Creek is one, and
The creek before.
There's another one.
It's tied.
Johnson Creek.
Jones Bunker Creek.
With the stoplogs out, there will be brackish water coming in, so it will change the quality of the water.
Absolutely.
The question is, how much water will be in there? And we won't know until, you know, probably another season.
Well, I really think the most pertinent question is, is what is the data on the 100-year flood? With the culvert and with the stoplogs removed, does the impoundment have enough capacity to absorb the 100-year flood without over-topping the road? And, you know, if the answer is yes, then I think the next question is as well, if it does with all the stoplogs removed, how many stoplogs will absorb, you know, that flood in the impoundment without over-topping? And then the next question is, is why can't you manage it by removing, basically, dam management?
Yeah.
If we're going to have a flood, remove a stoplog.
Well, we know the answer is why they want to get rid of it.
The culvert's not big enough, that's the problem. If the culvert was the way it was before they narrowed it down, it might handle that water, but the culvert's not big enough to handle a 100-year flood, that's what they told us.
It's not a question of the size of the culvert for 100-year flood. It's a question of what's the normal level of the impoundment, and then the size of the impoundment to essentially absorb the surge, so...
I don't think anybody knows that.
But they, at this point, they
They need to.
They need to.
The good news and the bad news is that the beaver died. I found it in the parking lot. It's huge, beaver, and I, so if they're worried about beaver, damn it, apparently that poor thing.
Probably committed suicide knowing that the water was going to go away. I'm sorry, it's a bad joke.
Never seen a thing that large, that beaver alone could stop the, worth two stoplogs.
No, this is just an annoying situation.
The other question is that sewer pipe, and as Mike explained, it's not the main sewer pipe, it's just one from Young Dry, correct? And what year was that built?
Seventy, like 68, 70.
So, and you put it underwater because the water was there and it keeps it?
Yeah, I didn't specify.
Were you about five years old then, 10 years old?
Weren't you in public works at the time? So we, we put it there, Durham put it there. And so the problem will be, if it's drawn down, we have to move that sewer pipe. And I think as you explained to me, that's a, it's a gravity feed, so it's hard to move.
You're going to have to look at it, that's why this two-foot, this two-foot drawdown actually helps us, because it gives us some, you know, better visibility. But the pipe maybe doesn't need to be moved. Maybe we get the permission from the state to put more cover over the pipe.
What do you mean, cover?
More gravel or loamy material, or, you know, even do some cord graces or something like that. Yeah, and just reinforce it a little bit better.
It'll be hard though if it's an estuary, right? Because there'll be water running in and out.
Yeah, and it's just, it's going to be, you're going to have to see when, how it looks when it's drawn down.
Yeah.
I've never personally seen it drawn down completely all the way. So this will be, it'd be great information to collect, yeah.
And the state is not proposing to draw it down entirely now, it's up to two feet. And I think upon being asked by the public at that public informational session, the state said their plan was within 18 months to bring it down the rest of the way. But that gives us a lot of time to evaluate some of these issues and to ask the questions.
Yeah, I know, and the other thing to look at is when, what they're doing, they can easily reverse, very quickly.
But they don't want, they don't want to.
If we get a drought, then it won't fill up as fast, but, you know, it can be reversed, so... It's not a permanent thing at this point. Could become a permanent thing.
I think the other issue for the state is, is that even if the impoundment could absorb the 100-year flood, does the 100-year flood go beyond the limits that were defined in the deeds in 1952? And then to landowners seek restitution for, you know, the water that might damage their property beyond that? I, you know, I think there's a lot of things that they're thinking about, some of which are financial liabilities, so...
So is there anything more you'd like us to do? We will follow up on that, we're going to start to open up a more active dialogue with the state about sort of their long-term plans, the capacity, what remediation might look like, all of that, evaluating our pipe, but is there more you'd like us to do?
Well, I would continue to stress that nobody seems to want this. Push that, keep pushing that, because it's clear that there are people who feel very strongly about it. And I know that you know that, but that would be my, yeah. If it's functional, if it's working, I guess it has over-topped once in the last 20 to 30 years, is that right?
Twice.
Twice.
I remember the Mother's Day flood in 2006. It was a couple of inches of water going over.
That's pretty amazing that it was only that.
Yeah, that's what I remember, you know.
Up until 108.
Yeah.
Yeah, over 108, yeah. Couple inches maybe, you know, they didn't close the road down.
No.
Traffic slowed down, high water signs, and life went on.
Right.
I think I would just like to say for people who might be listening, the council sort of took it on the chin a little bit in public comments that somehow we didn't react more quickly to what DOT was doing. What we received as a letter was a letter saying there was imminent danger of the sewer pipes bursting. We, as rational people, we checked that out, saw that that was not the case, so did not feel there was a need for a rush meeting of the town council. It wasn't that we were too lazy or out of town or something like that. It was a, it was a common sense decision that there was not imminent danger of the pipe breaking, so we didn't have to meet it, that's all.
Do we have the authority to tell the Transportation Department that they can't take those logs up? I mean, can we have a, let's assume we had a town council meeting last week.
And said...
And we said, we
You can't do it.
Passed on it and said, can't do it.
Injunction.
Okay. Do we, you know, we
The town of Durham, that dam is owned by the state of New Hampshire. The town of Durham has no authority to mandate anything there.
Well, I think
We can certainly ask, and we sent a letter of concern.
Yeah, so, I mean, for the benefit of the landowners of Beards Creek, there was very little that we could do to stop them from taking out those stoplogs. Yeah, the difference between that and Eversource is that we're up against a public, a private corporation, and there was a process in place that allowed us to intervene, and that's what we did legally. What they were asking for is political, for us to intervene. I think we can assure people that if we have an opportunity and see a need, we will intervene. And we may not be able to control it, we can do resolutions, we can do whatever we can to try to influence what actually happens. But in this case, I, they were determined, I don't think it would have mattered what we did at that point. They were going to do what they did. So, and we had, I think we had, Todd laid it out in the letter he wrote in response to somebody that, what this process entailed, and it sounded reasonable to me, because it gives us points to end along the way, right?
Mike, do you know, I think there's one property owner who kind of has mentioned the culvert being inadequate, and as a result, has lost land, trees, property value. Is that property owner the only one who's been affected by when water gets too high? Or are there other properties that also have that erosion occur?
Yeah, it's hard to see, because you don't get a big picture as you glance over, going over the, you know, but for instance, the guest house on the right-hand side has a nice lawn and cat and nine tails, there's a swing out there, there's a boat out there. Doesn't appear to have affected that side at all. The other side, the left side, the west side, has significant erosion.
So maybe after you're done with your Wagon Hill Farm shoreline restoration project, you'll move to Beards Creek?
Well, but that'll be really a state responsibility to address problems there, that it's up there making.
That becomes part of the solution, right?
All right, thank you, Mike.
At the hall?
Yeah. Do it before 10:30. Anybody else, anything else?
Do we have to, we have authority as the Energy Committee to appoint our own chair and vice chair? We don't have to bring that back into the
Nope.
It was, by the way, it was an interim chair for Mary, and I'm not sure, Harry said he could hold it for a while, but... We need some new, we could use a new member for the Energy Committee.
Good luck with that.
It's a fun committee, it's all-time energy.
Find a company in New Hampshire to offer Charlie Farcy a better
Yes, a better commute.
Commute.
He did terrific.
Yeah, he's a great guy.
He's wonderful. I think he's commuting to California.
Yeah, San Francisco. San Francisco. Okay, do I have a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Seconded. All those in favor? Thank you.